We're going to call this meeting to order. And the first item that we have is our work session. And item number one on that is to discuss regarding the 2021 and 22 budget. I'm not exactly sure. Was it you, Jan, that put this on? Okay, start us off.
Okay. Well, this is a huge topic. I think the citizens have spoken for a different direction and are asking to bring their taxes down. And in order to do that, you know, we've got to reduce spending and increase revenue. So I just wanted to open it up for ways that we can do that and go ahead and start discussing those now before the budget comes at us. So that we can be ahead of the curve. So I had just written down some, you know, some ideas from when I was on council a couple of years ago. And thought we would just start discussing those. And if anyone else has ideas, we can discuss those as well. Is that good? Okay. Well, the first one is just. I have a chart, you can't see it, but it's a chart from that starts in 2013, just to give you an idea of how much our tax increase has affected. Our, our, our houses, our homeowners. So if you had a home that was an average of $200,000 in 2013. The tax would be $4,000 and now it would be an extra $2,766 more. So. And that's an average, that's not an exact, some people would be more, some people it might be a little bit less, but that's an average. And with, with us being the fourth highest tax city in Tarrant County. What I hear from a lot of people is what's the value in that? What are we getting for that? Do we have a new fire station? Do we have a new fire truck? Do we have a new ambulance? Do we have a new, you know, are the streets, you know, really looking good? And they're just not seeing the value for the tax dollars. So the goal is for us to have a direction of reducing the taxes and how do we do that? How do we increase revenue? And. So there's a lot to talk about. Also, having conversations now, the budget projections were pretty far off last year. When the conversations in September, it was, you know, the budget was. It was going to be at a loss. And then the next month, it was presented as a 1.5 million difference, I think. So the tax, if you had had that information in September, it would have been a completely different conversation. And the tax, you probably wouldn't have the tax increase, I would be willing to guess. And it was a maximum tax increase during a pandemic. So we don't want to do that. We want to bring the taxes down and, but we want to have a plan to do that in place. And how can we do that? One of the ideas that we had talked about a couple of years ago was to have the department heads present the budget to council. So that we could have each department head knows their budget better than anyone. And have them discuss it. So I'll just open it up with that. How do you, how do y'all feel about that?
All the department heads have been in every budget session and responded to any issues that came up among council members since I've been here.
What did he say?
He said that the department heads have always been here to answer questions when we have them. But I'm guessing you're wanting more of a one-on-one presentation at the budget cycle.
Well, yeah, if we could have that in advance, it would alleviate issues, potential issues. And it's a little bit easier to understand the budget when you've been presented the budget in departments rather than all it. You know, here's the budget and we're going to, you know, it's a lot. So it might, I was just thinking it might be easier for council. And one of the things, for example, is. The, the fireman, there was a, the chief wasn't here. When we were talking about the budget and I had asked specifically, you know, how was there a, no increase on the budget? And the answer was that it was because to reduce, I think maybe Brian had done the budget that year, if I'm not mistaken. And it was reduced part-time staff. But if we had had him present, we would actually know what was in that budget. So there wouldn't have been an issue because we were thinking that the step plan was in that budget and it wasn't. So just to alleviate issues like that and understand it in more detail. So George, you're saying that that's not possible?
No, I didn't say that at all.
Okay.
I think it's a matter of, if the council wanted to have budget sessions with council, with staff members or department heads presenting their own budget. The question is timing, Jan. I don't, I can't tell whether you're suggesting you would want to do that now before we've even gotten into the budget process? Or when we put together the budget and then have them come present their departmental budgets, which would be probably the more effective way to do it.
What would be your recommendation as far as, you know, so that we could get it sooner rather than later?
So what?
What's the recommendation you would have so that we could get the information sooner rather than later?
I'm sorry, Jan, I'm having a hard time following you. The, the budget process has just barely started for the next fiscal year. In fact, the department heads haven't even begun to do anything formally to get a budget document to me. So, or to Lakita. So there's nothing, we don't have a budget today that the department heads could talk to you about. And that normally, we go through the process in May, June and July. And bring a document to you in early August. That is the fundamental recommendation for a budget and a benchmark from which council then starts their discussions. And I would think it'd be at that point that it would be more productive for the council to have. Have direct conversations with the department heads about their individual budgets. I'm not sure it'd be much different than you've had in the past. But before that point, before the first week or so in August. There really isn't a program of service for them to talk to you about. And we haven't had a chance to look at it in its entirety, all departments and what the total general fund budget is, for instance.
Okay, and, and I didn't, maybe I, I don't want you to misunderstand me. I wasn't saying to do it now, I was just asking when we might be able to do that. So I think by July, August, that would be great.
I mean. It's not until July.
Right.
That I even go over individual departments' budgets with the department heads.
Perfect.
I mean, I, I don't have anything, even if the first part of July, that I could hand to you and say, this is. A pretty good summary of what the police department's budget is going to be, because I don't know it at that point. It's the earliest we've ever been able to get that to the council. And any kind of a picture that's presentable and understandable is the first week in August.
Oh, that'd be perfect. If we could have in August, our meeting with department heads, I would be happy with that.
If I may, the city of Lake Worth, that is absolutely correct as far as the timing. August was when we always had our meetings with our city council. And it was like a half day or one day, however long it took, presentation that each department had, they had the opportunity to talk with council and.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
They were able to ask questions in that. But it was no way ready before then, it would have to be.
Right. And I wasn't asking for it early, just asking for it to, that we could do that when it became available.
I do have a question, if I may add. The. When the department heads are reviewing their budget in July or August, would that, would they also include a summary of what had happened? Or what their budget was in the 2021 year? And what the, what they expected versus in reality what occurred?
Well, we almost, you track that every month in the financials that you get on the council. Where we're monitoring the spending of every department against the budget that was adopted by the council on a regular monthly basis. And obviously during the budget processes, when we try to, try to more or less finalize what we think and project. The spending for each department is going to be by the end of the year. So in July, when we're putting together the budgets, Lakita is, we're looking at all the revenues and all the expenditures and trying to project for the council. When we present the budget in August, what we think the budget's going to be and the expenditures are going to be by the end of September. Now, there's still some projection in it at that point, but we're evaluating that during the June, July and August budget assimilation process, yes. Does that make sense?
Yes. So are you saying that you don't think city council would benefit at this point, reviewing what has happened from October 21 of 2020 until today? To give us an idea of, again, what the budget was proposed to be versus what actually occurred?
In your packet tonight is, is the financial reports for every department, every fund through the end of April. And any of those line items in there, if you have questions about those, and most of the expenditures, if you look at those financials are. Whereas revenue might be for the general fund, and I'm, I'm guessing at the numbers here. But at 85% of what we projected for the year. Individual departments expenditures may only be at 50% or 52%. Because some expenditures, for instance, in the water department or in other departments. A bulk of their expenditures come during the summer. So they haven't occurred yet. They don't necessarily track the same percentages as the revenue that we get every month. But hopefully, by the time we get to council in the first week or so of August. We'll have a pretty good projection of what we think and what the department heads individually think. Their revenues are going to be through the end of September. And what their expenditures are going to be through the end of September. And there are times when that might trigger a need for us to come to council and ask for a budget amendment. If in fact, we think anybody, if the police department's going to overspend for some unforeseen reason. Or if something else happens, that's, that's rare, but it can happen. And you all just approved this council, not all of you, but some of you approved a budget amendment recently for the current fiscal year. I don't know that we'd have another need for amendment. But by August, we will have a pretty good vision of what we think every department is going to spend unless something very unusual happens. Most likely place that would occur is in water fund, where you just don't know. What expenditures are going to be for the purchase of raw water or treated water? Because you don't know how hot it's going to be. But, or how much it's going to rain. But, but in most general fund departments, we are able to make pretty accurate projections.
Thank you, George. Can I just go back to backtrack a little bit on, are we in agreement as a council? That, that is a direction that we want the city manager, George, to go in is to reduce the taxes and reduce spending? And concentrate on increasing revenue, business revenue?
Yes, I think I'm definitely in agreement with that.
Chad?
I mean, yeah, I mean, that's what I fought for in the last budget cycle was trying to find ways to cut. I think that's going to be our hardest task is finding things to cut. Because we're basically at the floor of our, our operating costs. So it's, it's really hard to find things to cut. And, you know, we had a couple of votes where I got told, no, we can't cut that. So it's just going to come down to who's going to make the tough call and cut something everybody loves or whatever. So, yeah, I'm always about that.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, so. The other item that I had is, and thank you for that. I'm looking forward to having the department heads present to us, I really am. Do we need to make a motion for that? Or is that just going to be noted that that will happen in August?
I think it just noted that, you know, the budget presentation can be presented by the each department head? Or if they want to defer it to Lakita or George to present their budget?
Okay. We had reduced the city manager's spending from 50,000 to, I think, 25,000 in 2018 timeframe. And I guess the last council increased it back to 50,000. So that's one area that we can control spending is there. And so I would like to discuss that and possibly make a motion to be on the next agenda to reduce it back to. Whatever amount that you guys think it's, I think we had started out with 10,000, but I don't, we went, ended up with 25,000. Is where we ended up before. So I just wanted to open that up for discussion.
Well, I know, if, correct me if I'm wrong, George, but one of the things that we ran into problem with is just paying some of our normal bills. Meant having to call a special session to get us to vote for approval for that. And those are just normal monthly bills that you were having to pay.
Well, I don't think we ever had to do that for the 25,000 level.
Well, we have some monthly bills that are more than $25,000, I think. But as I recall, the intent was not to keep us from paying those bills on time.
Correct.
There are something like a utility bill or JEXA energy or something like that. Jan, I think what your question at the time was, and the reason was, you wanted to reduce my spending authority. For things like signing contracts for construction projects or for work, for instance. And, and I do it very seldom for amounts that are over 25,000. There've been a couple recently where we're trying to make improvements, for instance, to the senior center. Where that was more than a $25,000 contract, but less than the 50,000 that I'm authorized to do. And what we pointed out, and when Lakita came, she came back to the council. Limiting that spending authority from 50 to $25,000 is pretty dramatic. When you're trying to carry on day-to-day business and, and, and issue contracts that are funded in the budget. I mean, and obviously, I don't spend money that's not in the budget somewhere. But some of the contracts for spending that money may exceed $25,000. And when you've limited that, and in the city of Kennedale, when we have council meetings once a month. It works against the objective of trying to provide fast, efficient, creative service to the public and to our citizens. If I have to wait and put something on hold for 30 days because I can't sign a contract that's more than $25,000. So clearly, I had recommended against that for efficiency reasons. The last council agreed with that after Lakita came and we saw that, that. The, the ability for that to create obstacles within our day-to-day functioning of city government. So if the council wants to do it, you can change the purchasing policy and restrict my spending authority to whatever you want to. I think, and what we've done in surveys is the $50,000 is a pretty conservative number for cities of our size. And it's considerably more than that in cities any larger than we are. So. It's a matter of what the council wants to do. But my interest is in being able to provide service to our citizens in a timely and in an efficient manner. And that happened, that's a policy that in my opinion, works against our ability and your ability to do that.
Is that a monthly thing, 50,000 a month? Is that the way it works? I'm new to that.
No, Gary, what the policy was, it changed the authority under our written purchasing policy. That I could not execute a contract for any kind of work with a contractor? Or to make a purchase of any kind if the amount exceeded $25,000. And as an example, recently have been two that come to my mind in there, and they don't happen very often. But I authorized a contract that we talked to council about, and the money was in the budget to do renovations in the fire station. Because we weren't able to go to a bond election or do the things we needed. And I signed one that was for less, for more than 25,000. To do maintenance in the community center, I mean, in the senior center. And that was right after council approved a budget amendment to make sure the funding was in the budget for it. But if I had had to then take those bids and put it on hold for another 30 days until I could get it on a city council agenda. It just causes inefficiencies and, and can create some problems in operation.
But it's already in the budget, right? So.
Yeah, now, again, understand, I'm only spending money that you have approved in the budget.
Correct.
It's just that an individual contract may be for more than $25,000. You may have approved a budget for a street construction projects in, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I have a contract come to me where we want to get a stormwater project or a street project under construction and in the works or an engineering contract. That in itself costs more than $25,000. Under that policy, I just can't proceed with those projects without coming back to the full council for.
How about we get a, could we get a list, say from, what, do you want to go back to January? You want to go back to November? Just a list to show us what projects were approved or disapproved for that? Or is it in the budget already? What line item?
I don't, we could make a list of anything that I've signed that's less than $50,000 and more than $25,000. Since the beginning of this fiscal year, I don't think it's been more than two or three. Most contracts that I think are, I mean, we should be concerned about is our construction contracts that come to council. Because they're well over 50,000. If there's a street project for $100,000. Or the purchase of a piece of equipment that's $100,000. I cannot and don't want to be able to sign those contracts without your specific approval. But something less than 50,000, when the money's approved by the council in the budget, just hamstrings us.
Well, I personally would like to see a list if I could get it from, say, January the 1st, if that would be fine, if we can do that.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion though, to put it on the agenda to reduce it to 25,000 on the next meeting.
This is, this is a work session and it's just a discussion item. I think staff probably has direction. There's also a process that the city's established by a resolution for council members to get items on the agenda.
Correct.
Takes two council members to submit a written request to the city manager to put something on the agenda.
Okay, so I would like to have a direction then for that to be put on the agenda without a motion. For it to be put on the agenda for next month with the follow-up of an email.
And I'll agree with her.
Okay, with y'all two saying that, well, we'll put it on the agenda. And we're going to have somebody going to speak on this, so Joe Palmer, come up.
Thank you, I do need something, appreciate that. Joe Palmer, 4017 Sangiovese Court. I was going to highlight something, but it actually just occurred, we had a motion in a second. So what's important to understand is that the meetings that you have here tonight, the city council meetings are governed by Robert's Rules of Order. You're not constrained by the agenda in the sense that some people might want you to believe you are. You have the power to make a motion, you have the power to make a second and vote on that item, to give direction to staff. Staff works for the city council. City staff is not deferential to, city council members are not deferential to city staff. Staff works for city council, who in turn work for the people. We had an overwhelming, resounding mandate from the people in this last election result. And that election is not over. Two out of three, we got run remaining and we remain hopeful. But you need to remember that a motion can be made, it can be seconded, and you go in the direction you want to go in. The people are crying out for leadership on this council. And a, a spending constraint from the city manager, that's entirely reasonable. And I'll just highlight two things that you just said, Mr. Campbell, is that you had a constraint before. It was a 25,000 before and the sky did not fall. And number two, you can see these things coming on the horizon, can't you? It's not 25,000, oh my God, I've got to spend this tomorrow and I don't have a vote from council. So just go ahead and accept the reduction, that would be reasonable, it was reasonable before. And follow the lead of council. And I'm coming to you as somebody who's not trying to take away, you know, the toys out of your toy box, so to speak. I represent the businesses in the city. And I've spoken to many, spoken to many business owners in this city. Jeff Prowse, who has a business on Gilman, he's trying to get a business on Gilman, he owns a property there. And he has been denied the ability to open up an auction pickup location. An auction pickup location, not an auction site, but he has emailed all members of this council. And he has gotten response from one council member during an election. He's gotten a response from one council member. And so why do I bring this up? What does this have to do with the budget? What does this have to do with bond elections? If you let businesses operate, then you would have money. The business owners want you to be flush with cash. We want you to make money off of us. All right? So accept the direction from council when it comes to spending constraints from staff, when it comes to fiscal conservatism? And when it comes to being business friendly as a city. Thank you.
Before we move forward with this, while we're still under the budget. And something that he just kind of touched on that I would like to speak on is, is the fact that. We, our businesses do need to flourish. Our businesses produce the revenues that help to reduce taxes. And so I've talked to George about this once, but I would like to see us have town hall meetings. And I would like to start the first one with our business owners here in Kennedale. And if we can get it on the. If we can get it on the agenda for June 7th, that's a Monday night, I'd just like to get the feedback from the other council members. I know some of you don't get phone calls like I do, but I get calls and emails all the time from business owners. Because I am a business owner and I've been in Kennedale for 40 something years. And I know most all of them, and so they call me. So some of you don't get to hear what I get to hear about the problems that the businesses are having. With different areas of our cities, the only thing I'm going to say about that. But I would like to start having town hall meetings on, on different items and let people come up here and, and tell us all together what they're going through in our city. And how we can work together to become one city for all. For the businesses, for the residents, for the staff, for the council and, and our residents especially, because they're paying for the whole ticket. So that's my recommendation that we start having town hall meetings.
All right, any further discussion on item number one?
I think that's a great idea. What, on the business? Yeah, I'm on, can you hear me? Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I'd like to hear from the businesses, I hear from some businesses as well. I'd like to hear the good and the bad and the ugly and see what we can do to make things better for them, to embrace them. And see what we can do to help them increase their revenue. To see where businesses are hurting and, and see what areas that we can step in. And because if we don't know, we can't help them. So I think it's a great idea. Would, would the town hall be here? And just open it up, have all council here and then have people come and sign up to speak or? Would that?
I have no idea. I mean.
Have it at like 6:30 or something like that?
Again, you know, if we start talking about the ways we want to reduce the budget, we're talking about staff time. Operational costs and granted, it's probably minimal, but maybe we can find ways to support the businesses in the community and have those at their places. And encourage, you know, it's a dinner event where you go to. Reds for something and you go down to here, this other place or something, and we can bring it to the businesses. Another thought?
I think it needs to be in an open forum, just for the simple fact, they need to have their voices heard. They don't have a voice. The, the business in this, in this community do not have a voice, I promise you. And you'll, you'll find out, if we have a town hall meeting, you'll hear the voice, you'll, you'll find out. That they're being ignored as we speak. So I think it ought to be right here, if we just have one every other month or whatever we gotta, we gotta do, the people need to be heard. That, that's, that's, that's all I've got to say about that. Because I don't know if there's any in here tonight or not, business owners, but there's just a lot of them that just are not represented in this city.
All right, well, we'll start discussions with staffs on dates and times.
So the 7th of June is around the corner. So if we're going to have it the 7th of June, then we'd need to go ahead and get it nailed down pretty fast. Right?
All right, well, we'll, we'll talk to you about that here shortly and see if we can make that work.
I have another question for George on the consultant cost for new council orientation. It's my understanding that that was paid for last year, but it, it wasn't done. Can you tell me how much that was for? How much the cost, how much that was?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, we did have planned a, a governance training session. That we canceled because of COVID after a lot of the preparation had been done. And I think we did pay the consultant part of his fee for the work that he had done in preparation, but I don't recall what it was.
Okay, so he was paid basically for what he was done, period, right?
Yes.
So, okay.
A portion of what his total fee was going to be, but I just don't remember the numbers.
Okay, if, I was just curious about that because I don't, and I'd like to see maybe what would. what was done, and my reason for bringing this up is, again, in, in reducing cost is for there not to be, because I know when we came in in 2017, there was a consultant, I think we paid over 14,000 plus an all-day staff, department head, staff for all day long, and then I think there was another one the next year, and I would just like for us to not do that, since we're looking at reducing cost, is to not do that this time, this year, to not spend anymore and on new council orientation.
We don't have any kind of, of a recession planned for council at this point.
Okay.
For this, for the current fiscal year.
And can you tell me, not right now, but can you get back to me with what we paid him?
Oh, sure.
And what we got out of that?
Sure.
Any further discussions on our first item?
I, I do have a question very shortly, Mr. Campbell. You say you don't have a session planned right now for council, but did you intend to plan that in the future, or no?
No, we don't have any plans in the making at this point for an orientation session or a governance training session of any kind for the city council to be funded out of the current year's budget.
Understood. I have another thought on the, the budget, is I'd like to talk about the TERS. The TERS has a little over 300,000 in the TERS fund, and initially, the way that the TERS was presented and how money was borrowed from different accounts, from the water fund specifically, I'll just use that as an example, it was presented that money would be borrowed from the water fund, but when the TERS funds, when money came into the TERS, that that money would be paid back. And that's said in several places, and I would like to discuss that and have a TERS meeting. We haven't had a TERS board meeting since 2018, and the last discussion at the TERS board meeting was specifically to that, when the money came in, that it would go back to water, it would come to council, and council would make the direction as to that money being paid back. So I'd like to request that we have a TERS board meeting to discuss that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not exactly sure the steps we need to take to get a TERS board set up. I don't know if those
We need, we
Other positions have been filled.
I agree with Jan that we need a TERS board meeting. That whole issue that you've just raised about money being owed to the city is, is a very complex issue that we've addressed a number of times, but I do think we need to have a TERS board meeting to go over what any of those requirements are, what the financial status of the TERS fund is itself, and we can, we can plan for that.
Okay, because it, it didn't seem complicated before. It only became complicated when the request was made for the money to be paid back, then it became complicated, but as the TERS funds, as it, you know, progressed and rode along was presented, it wasn't complicated, it was the money will be borrowed from this fund and it will be paid back as money comes into the TERS fund. And at the TERS meeting in 2018, that was the discussion, it wasn't complicated. So I don't know where it became complicated, but if we could have a TERS board meeting, perhaps we could work that out.
We'll get one set up, I guess.
Do we have an approximate, how long it will take to set up a TERS meeting?
Well, no, I mean, it takes the same kind of posting that a city council meeting does. Being prepared for that kind of a discussion is gonna take longer. So, I mean, we could try to have one within the next 30 days, see if we can get prepared for a meeting that would try to answer some of those questions that Jan has raised.
Thank you.
And I guess, Jan, if you have more questions with the TERS stuff, so that can be included for the meeting members, if you would just send those over to George.
Okay. Which also, I'd like to discuss that as well, I'd like to put Rocky back on the TERS board. Rocky Gilly, I'd like to put him back on the TERS board. He was, I think he was chair of the TERS board, and then he was, which you don't have to be on council to be on the TERS board. He was removed from the TERS board, and I'd like to make a motion or request a directive to put him back on the TERS board, as he has the knowledge and the background from the meetings before, from the last meeting of 2018.
And just as a reminder, I mean, this item is limited to the budget, so I'm not sure...
I'm sorry, what, Drew?
Said this item, this item that we're discussing is limited to the budget. I don't know how, I mean, I think your point's been made, and staff can take your direction, but, I mean, this item is about the budget, so
Right.
Should be appointed to boards, that probably needs to be another item.
Okay, I'll go with that, thank you. I'll make a motion for that another time. But it is, the TERS is related to the budget. It all kind of works together, because there's money in the TERS that would go back, and since he's familiar with the process and was there during that meeting, I think it would be important to have him. Does anyone else have any ideas for the budget? I don't, I feel like I'm hogging the microphone here. The other idea, sorry, was to look at changing the comprehensive plan in areas to allow more businesses rather than so much parkland. We have a, a lot of areas on the comprehensive plan that are for park, that possibly we need to look at those by area, and we've talked about reviewing the comprehensive plan for a while, but maybe we look at it in areas, specifically the areas that are dedicated to parkland, and maybe we look at that and see if it makes sense now to roll that back, and when I say roll that back, but to remove maybe some of it from being parkland, so we can open it up to more businesses coming in. As an example, on Trent Street, there was a piece of property that was bought that, because that area is, is on the comp plan, is to be park, but I just don't ever see us having enough money to buy all of that and turn all of that into a park, so would it make more sense now, let's revisit it, and look and see if it would make more sense to have businesses in those areas? And I know some of it is considered floodways, but there's also insurance that can be bought for those floodway areas, but just to look at those and see what we can do there, and maybe make it not so difficult for businesses to come into that area. Thoughts?
Well, and in that vein, I've heard that there was a comprehensive plan before the 2012 that was completely different than the current comprehensive plan we have. Is there a way we can get that from city staff? Would we have kept archives of the previous comprehensive plans?
I'm, I'm sure we've got copies somewhere of anything that's older than that.
I mean, I think as far as the comprehensive plan goes, it's, we're hitting the 10-year mark on it, so it's probably time to give the whole thing an overlook, and, and kind of start from there, so that's just my opinion.
I agree with that. I was thinking that if we look at it in pieces, it might be less expensive, because I know when you look at it the whole, it's very expensive, but if we look at it in pieces, then we might be able to, what's the saying, eat the elephant one bite at a time, rather than spending a lot of money on a whole study. Just kind of look at it, look at this specific area, and maybe this specific area, and have conversations about those.
I think if we're gonna talk about areas of our town that we could look at, planning, future planning would be to really concentrate, honestly, in the highway corridors with what we have coming with the rebuild of 287, I-20, 820. I think the face of Kennedale at the north is gonna completely change, and I think we need to be looking at that right now on what that should or shouldn't be.
Agree, and that is, that's actually an area over there where there's a lot of parkland that we can look at. I don't know what your thoughts are, council, on how you want to, or when you want to start doing that, but I would think sooner better than later, as far as, you know, maybe getting it on the agenda and start addressing that as a rolling topic.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's something we can start kind of bringing up here over the next couple of meetings, is just to kind of see where we want to start.
Get started on it?
Because, like I said, I think that whole area is gonna go retail crazy, and even if we're talking about the budget, that's where your, your income's gonna come from, is your retail commercial sector.
Exactly, increase business revenues. One other thing is, what can the chamber do to help us? What does the chamber do? Are we getting a return on our investment from the chamber? Can the chamber building be used for another business opportunity? I think it costs somewhere between 400 to 500,000 to put the chamber in the parking lot, so I'm just wondering what we can do. What, what can the chamber do to help us increase our business revenue, revenues? What are some options that maybe we haven't thought about?
I think that'd be a great presentation to have the chamber come give us, is what are they doing right now currently? What do they see? What were the concerns that they have? How can we work with them to meet the, the concerns?
I think it's a great idea.
So I think we should reach out to Chamber and see if they want to come and talk to us a little bit.
I think that's a good idea. Is that something that, George, that you would do?
I could go to, the Chamber of Commerce has been very inactive for the last year, at least, and although they have had a couple of board meetings, they've essentially been very, very inactive, and I'm not sure, I can approach Mr. Taylor, who's currently the, the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and see what kind of a discussion or presentation we might have. We might ask them to come to a city council work session and just discuss generally what their plans might be, but I can tell you that from my experience, sitting on that board, the chamber's been very inactive, and I don't know that they'd have a very aggressive plan that they could present to the council. It needs some energy, in my opinion.
Is that something that we want to think about as a council, as some ideas? You know, I mean, if it's not active, is, you know, what can we do with it? What are some of the options that we have?
That's my, it's my opinion, the chamber board would welcome any suggestions for what, what the city might think they can, that they could do better to serve the city from a business promotion perspective.
Since the chamber is under the EDC umbrella, right?
No.
The chamber is under the EDC umbrella, is that correct?
The Chamber of Commerce is, as far as I know, a completely separate entity from the city, or the
But it sits on the EDC land.
It's, it is, its offices are on EDC-owned property, and it, the building that they are in is owned by the EDC.
Okay, that's what I meant.
But the function of the chamber is not
Correct.
The city doesn't have anything to do with the function of the Chamber of Commerce.
So maybe that would be a conversation for us, is to see what ideas we might have other than it being used for a Chamber of Commerce. You know, it's, it's, I mean, it's a nice building, we paid 400 to 500,000 dollars to bring it here, so, you know, what are some other ideas that we can come up with for our return on our investment?
Well, Jan, I think we had some discussion before about could that building be better used for some other purpose? And I'm not arguing with your time, taking it just as a point of discussion, I think the community and the city and the business community would be better off if we could help the chamber determine programs that would better serve the business community and make it a more viable organization for businesses.
I don't disagree with that, we just haven't done it, so here we are. So I'm just looking for a way to quickly get some return on investment for that building, and just kicking around some ideas, because I guess I can see it being, I happen to love chicken salad, so if they put a great chicken salad place right in the middle, I'd be like, yes, I would like that, you know, or a really, really unique pizza place, or whatever. I could see that, you know, that bring in some, you know, it'd be something good for the community as well. It brings some revenues to us, so if that's an option for us to explore, that would be great for us to explore that. I don't think I was a part of that conversation with other possibilities for that building. I don't remember being a part of that conversation. And then, as, on EDC, since we're talking about the EDC, is it possible that the EDC could now, since EDC has money in their funds, that they could repay, for example, the Dick Price, the, the land on Dick Price? The water fund paid for that land for like 172,000 dollars. Can the EDC pay that back now? That might be something to talk about. And have we ever talked about reducing the income, the sales tax revenue that the EDC receives, have, received, sorry? Have we ever thought about halving that, or half to the EDC and half to the street fund as a budget item?
What was this, Jan, what was the issue again? What, what are you talking about?
She was saying to split the sales tax percent from the EDC to create a new fund for streets or some other use.
Use some of the EDC sales tax for street?
Correct.
That may be more Drew question, but I'm not sure that the city can arbitrarily, without an election, change the percentage of sales tax revenue that the EDC collects.
But we could do it through an election. We could put it out to the vote.
Yes.
We could put it out to the citizens to vote on. So would that be something that we would want to talk about? I mean, because we're always looking for ways to increase the street fund specifically.
One of the things that we have explored and talked to the council about for the last two years has been the, to consider implementation rather than the sales tax from the EDC implement, as some other cities in Texas are doing and have done, a street, a street fee, similar to what the stormwater fee is, to raise money that would be dedicated to street maintenance. So that's an option done to look at, and it might be another option to look at.
Is that an item that we can put on the agenda to, to get it on the next election cycle?
The EDC?
Yes.
I, I'd have to do some research, Jan, I don't know how fast that can occur. I don't have, I don't know whether it could be on, I think to do that, say in November, you'd have to have that outlined, planned, whatever, and called for an election, as early as August, probably. I just don't know what it takes to prepare that.
Okay. And what about the EDC paying back the water fund for Dick Price?
I don't know, I'd have to look into it, I don't know what, how much, you're talking about the land that the city owns up on Linda, on Linda Road?
Mm-hmm, that the, yeah, so the EDC owns it.
Right.
That the water fund paid for.
We're gonna have some discussion about that land in closed session tonight, maybe we can address that with council.
I would just like to say that all these items, all these things that Jan has brought up, you know, I came on in November, I know nothing about any of these things. So, you know, we, as a council, we only hear about what you guys present to us. So if we never know about these things, how can we do anything to change them, to fix them, to make it better? And so by having dialogue on all these things that she's bringing up, it changes the whole projection of everything, in my opinion. So for us to come together as a council, and to be able to lower the, the proper, the taxes for our citizens, we have to make some, some strategic moves somewhere to do something. We can't just sit back and wait for something to come at us, we got to do something. So everything that she's brought up, as far as I'm concerned, is, is, is something that we need to look into on every one of these items. So, you know, I stand behind her 100% as, as one of the council members, so Linda, I don't know, you know, what you know, what you don't know, but I know that you're for the citizens and you'd like to lower the taxes. Chad, you've said it as well, so I'm not speaking for you, but we want to aggressively work with you and help you to figure out a way to do that.
Any other things on item one? Going once, going twice? Let's move on to number two, which is a discussion regarding the which is a discussion regarding the planned issuance of general obligation and or certificate of obligation debt for capital improvement programming.
And I asked for that as well to be put on because I, it's my understanding, and I haven't been on council for the past two years, but it's my understanding that there is a $6 million bond coming up in June. So I wanted to put this item on the agenda now to discuss that and the possibility of delaying that until the new council has a very full understanding of what is in that $6 million bond and our, the whole picture of where the city stands on the different bonds that we've had in the past. I think there may have been two different bonds issued in the past two years. I'm not 100% sure. Maybe two, $2 million bonds, I'm not sure. But if, but that's why this is on there is to discuss delaying that and not getting us in a situation in June where we say no, and there's a cost to that bond being issued, which has happened before. And I don't want to get us in that position again.
Jen, the, I think what you're talking about is we have come to the council several times over the last couple of years and talked about capital projects that could be funded and that we need and that are high priority that could be funded if we issued debt to pay for them and that we have the capacity to issue $14 million of new debt over the next four years, I think. Is that correct, Lakita, four years? We have the ability and, and the, and the capacity to issue that debt. And the plan was that council has agreed to is to issue $6 million of that $14 million in August of this year, which we can do because of debt being paid off without an, any increase in the tax rate to continue paying for our debt service. And we would then have $6 million to be doing some of those capital projects that have just been put on hold time after time. Then the other 8 million of that $14 million would be sold or could be sold in 2024, I think, that would also be able to be issued without any tax rate increase because of old debt being paid off. And there's a list of projects that council has reviewed numerous times. In addition to that, the council has given us direction that out of the $6 million to be issued in August, not June, but in August, those are certificates of obligation that would be issued in August. About a million dollars of that would be used for public safety improvements. And the council has already authorized us to place an order for a new ambulance, which is about 20, $250,000. I don't remember roughly. But the ambulance, the fire truck, which we also have drawn up specs for, have applied for a grant for, would be the balance of that roughly million dollars out of that first $6 million. So the council has now authorized us to issue the debt in August. They've committed the first million dollars of that to take it away from street projects or storm rain projects and pay for public safety improvements in the way of a fire truck and an ambulance, part of which we've already placed an order for. So delaying that sale in August is going to add a minimum, and I need to get our financial advisors or Lakita to comment on that. But in my opinion, would jeopardize our plans to purchase those pieces of equipment and/or do pretty significant capital projects that the council has repeatedly said we need to figure out a way to get under construction. So delaying it is just going to cause one more delay of those projects. Now, council can give me direction not to issue that debt in August of 20, of this year, but there will be ramifications of doing that. So.
Understand, thank you. What I'd like to request is a full bond presentation with all active bonds and loans and what the bonds and loans were used for, including the EDC. I'd like that presented to this council because this is a new council, not the old council that gave directive. And I'm not, and to delay it until that presentation has happened so that we understand what we've had, what we've spent and what the $6 million is for, because the new council doesn't know what that $6 million is for. And I'd like for that to happen before we issue any, any new bonds.
Do you think you could have that kind of information ready by next council meeting?
By June? Let me visit with Lakita about it and see what all we'd need to put together in order, particularly if you're going to talk about the history of all bonds that are outstanding debt of the city. I just don't know what's involved in preparing that. But I think probably we could do it by the June meeting.
Okay.
Which is scheduled, I think, our June meeting is June the 15th.
Do you know what kind of bonds are being paid off in that time period? You said there was going to be some paid off.
I don't know. Lakita, do you, can you answer that?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For fiscal year '21, we are having a total of about 1.5 million in bonds that we're paying, and that's 1.5 million. And, you know, it just includes all of the outstanding bonds, you know, that go back to, some of them go back to 2007. So if you actually have your budget books on page 91, yeah, you can find anything that's outstanding. And there's also a detailed page behind that that will tell you what each and every one of those bonds were, the purpose for them and what they were supposed to be used to pay for. And I don't see why we wouldn't be able to put something together for June if you want any more detail about, you know, the length outstanding on any of those bonds or, you know, any other history you may want. I could work with the financial advisors to get that together.
That would be for the EDC also.
I can do that for the EDC also.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you, Lakita. Do you have any more questions? Because we do have somebody who wants to speak on this topic. All right, can I have them speak while you figure out your next question? Okay, Mr. Joe Palmer, come on up.
Is that on now? I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to correct something I said earlier. It was not this current council who all the members were emailed by Jeff Prowse. It was the former council members. And only one of those responded and is one of the two that were voted off, voted out or defeated in the election. George issuing new debt, retiring old debt means tax rate stays the same. This is an opportunity to cut people's taxes. If the bond failed or if you did not issue a bond, the tax rate would be lower. That's essentially saying the same thing, sir. And the people in the city and the business owners really do need a tax break. If the county bond passes, God knows that the school district's going to pass a bond election. It's going to make their tax rate go up. So, you know, anything the city can do to mitigate that and lower that burden is really good. I just, I just have to say when I'm sitting over there and I'm listening to this interaction between council members and the city manager, I hear questions, I hear good questions about information that's not known. You have to go to great lengths to dig up this information and then come to council meeting with a question. And it's responded to with just this, this quagmire, this, this web of just enter, just chained down, like no progress. Well, I'll get back to you. You know, I'm going to check with this person and check with this other thing. And it's a real complicated issue. And it's not something that can move very quickly. This government is broken. And I don't know if it's something that you are observant of or if it's something that needs to be done about. But you, you understand, in my words, the, the frustration with how the city is being run and how the businesses are being treated. And how it connects to the agenda item of the bond election is if businesses were allowed to open and be here or exist the ones that are already here without being harangued on a daily basis from code compliance who work for you and who answer to you, then more businesses would stay and more businesses would open. As it is right now, there is no measurable way to determine how many of these businesses are leaving this city. But I'm telling you again, and this is the reason I come to speak to you. Do I live here? No. Do I own a business here? No. I'm surprised nobody's, I mentioned it, it happens every meeting, but the two that most often do that are no longer with us. I am here because people are afraid to come forward. And I, I hesitate to agree with you that a lot of people would attend a business town hall. I would do everything I could to get them to attend. But I am here because you can't do anything to me. You don't have a permit to hold over me or revoke from me or the ability to do business. I speak on behalf of people who are afraid to come to these meetings and speak. And to be quite honest with you, some of them don't speak very good English. I'm speaking English very well, thank you. One in particular, Jeff Prowse, who I told you about. Ms. Daley went and visited him. And he left that conversation with the understanding that he would receive the ability to run a business, the auction holding site. So based on his conversation with her, he spent money, spent hundreds of dollars. He put in bushes, he moved dirt, he even put in foundations for parking lamps, only to have the rug pulled out from under him. Now, why does this matter? Why should you even care about this? Because he projects $100,000 in tax revenue. You don't want to hear from the businesses. All right, we'll take more than three minutes to tell you what they're going through.
Do you have your next question, Jen?
I have another question, but I do agree that it would be a town hall would be a great opportunity to have our businesses to come and to speak and to be heard. I do agree with that and I really look forward to that. I actually look forward to having town halls every month. And the next town hall being the citizens, because we have citizens that are having problems that can come forward or issues or, you know, good things too, we want the, the good as well. But we certainly want to work out the issues. That's the goal of the town halls is are there issues and what can we do to work them out?
Any further discussion on our second agenda item? All right, with that, we are going to move into executive session. So pursuant to 551.071, to discuss consultations with the attorney pertaining to any matter in which the duty of the city attorney under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct may conflict with the Open Meetings Act, including discussion of any item posted on the agenda, legal issues regarding the Open Meetings Act and the following cases that we have under there. So at this time, we're going to ask everybody to please step out into the hallway as we go into executive session.
Sorry. Wow. Jan Joplin. Gary Mitchell. Julie Jacobson, here. Linda Rhodes, here. Mayor Proton Wondell.
Here. Let's see. The next thing we're going to do is have our invocation and our pledges to the US and Texas flag. So if Brother Gary Mitchell would lead us in our invocation and Ms. Jan Joplin, if you would lead us, lead us in our pledges.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today, Father, and we just want to thank you. We want to thank you for the opportunity to come and to serve our citizens and serve our city with, with all of our heart. Father, we ask you to watch over our first responders. Father, we ask you to watch over our citizens. Lord, we know that there's some of them that are going through some terribly hard times. So Father, we just ask you to bless them. Father, we thank you that we can come together as one body, Father, to, to operate in, in this body of government, Father. And so we ask for your guidance and your wisdom, Father, your knowledge that would help us to, to make good, godly decisions for our council. Father, we just want to thank you and praise you for what you're going to do in our lives today, Father. Thank you for the blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, next we have our visitor and citizens forum. We didn't have anybody sign up for that. Oke, oke. Reports and announcement, updates from city council. We'll start over there with Ms. Jan Joplin.
Well, thank you. It's an honor to be back here again. The citizens have spoken for a different direction. And I think you can see with the new council that's up here, even within the last six months, that, and with the discussions that we've had today, that we are going to go in a different direction. We're going to do what you've asked us to do. And I'm honored and I will pick up where I left off with accountability and reduce spending and taxes and embrace and connect our community. I did want to say, speaking of community, Kid Fish was this past Saturday. Larry, thank you so much. For you and your staff were there and just made it really nice and the park looked great. It was a beautiful day. We had about 80 to 100 kids that were there. And a lot of the kids had never fished before. So a lot of parents were there and brought their kids and they just had a really good day. There was a food truck there or snow, snow cones, and that was fun. Senior Outreach was there with Humana. And Gary brought some snacks for the kids. And they had stocked 400 pounds of catfish had just been stocked the day before on Friday, but no one caught catfish. So if you fish, you probably go out to the pond and they were catching some little perch. And I think there were maybe a couple of big bass. But there was no catfish, so they're out there. So if you fish, go for it. And also the splash pad was open. And it was being enjoyed, even though it was a little bit breezy, but there were people out there enjoying it. So thank you for having, for having that open. And the weekend before was Mother's Day and I attended a vendor fair at We Bloom, which is a new florist on Dick Price, 320 Dick Price. Really nice florist. If you need a florist or haven't been out to visit them, they have fresh flowers. And they had a lot of vendors out there. It was really windy that day. I don't know if you remember that the Saturday before Mother's Day, it was really windy. But hopefully they'll do it again. And people can come out because that's how we, you know, support our new businesses. And that is all that I have.
Go ahead, Gary.
I think she summed it up. The Kid Fish was awesome. First time I've ever been there. It's sad to say, I've been here a long time and never attended one, so I had a great time. And we've come up with some ideas for next year. We're trying to get the high school fishing team involved and, and what's the academy down there? Christian? Fellowship Academy. They have a fishing team as well, so we're going to try to get those guys involved. Yeah, and maybe the Boy Scouts as well, because there's a lot of kids that didn't know how to fish. Parents didn't know how to fish, so we helped some of them out the best we could. But we want to make it better for all of them. They'll be able to catch fish next time, so, yeah. I used to fish for a living, so I got a little, little experience there, so, yeah. Hallelujah.
And I have no updates in addition to what they've said, so thank you.
Linda?
Well, first off, I want to thank the outgoing council, which Councilman Altum for his service on the council. And welcome the new, some returning. And then also, as things reopen and we have Kid Fish and other activities going on, I'd like to mention that the Methodist Church is having their quarter auctions again. I attended it this last month and had a pretty good crowd there. And Lori can tell you more about that. They, they sponsor different organizations for fundraisers. But it's just a way to go and have some fun and fellowship together. And then I guess lastly, as I'm excited for the senior center to be getting the renovations and I look forward to hearing some updates hopefully on that soon. Thank you.
And like I think everybody made an appearance at some point at Kid Fish. I showed up. It was awesome to see all those people out there enjoying our parks. I like to see our parks enjoyed that frequently. enjoyed that frequently more often. So, you know, I think that's something to put forward to council is, let's start thinking of ways to get those parks to get a little more use out of them. And then shout out to Sarah, her group, and then for the Mother's Day. If you didn't know this, the Senior Outreach made corsages for all the moms, the senior moms out there. I thought that was awesome. And I think you're doing something for dads, which is going to be harder because we're stubborn. So, good luck. Gift cards or ties. So see Sarah for gift card donations and tie donations. Thank you for all that you do. I got to give our town props. We have some of the best charities ever in this town. And I have never seen people take so little and make it go so far. And that's why I love donating to these ladies. So thank you for all you do. And then let's see, updates from the mayor, who is not here. So he missed his turn, and we'll send it over to the city manager, George.
I have no other updates, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. And then we have next on our list.
Hold on just a second, Chad. I was asked specifically to have an update on the senior center renovations. If you could give us an update on the senior center renovations.
Well, they're underway. Larry may have better information right now, but they're well under construction on renovating the bathrooms and have put all new ceiling tiles in. They painted on the outside of the building. I think there's some delay for a week or so because of delivery of partitions in the bathrooms and restrooms. Of course, those are being remodeled in order to be ADA compliant. And so it's coming along quite well. Larry, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that on the status?
They were able to get the flooring in in the bathrooms today and get it grounded in. So yes, we're waiting on the partitions and the countertops for the sinks in the bathrooms. The rest of it, you nailed, George. That's all correct.
Do you have a timeframe? Because I didn't know what the original timeframe was to begin with.
The, well, we'd hope to have it done by now, but the partitions have been delayed once. We're uncertain if they're going to be delayed again. So we're just waiting to see when they arrive.
Hopefully, within the next two, three weeks.
Oh, nice. Okay. So maybe by June timeframe or something to be finished?
Yes, there is a trucking issue nationwide.
Right.
So we're experiencing the same issue with those.
Okay. And then one more thing, George. Is there an Arlington water update? Like, are we on Arlington water?
We have got, no. The answer is, we're not on a regular basis. We have taken water now from Arlington. On a couple of occasions, because of emergencies, we had a pump station down. We had the freeze.
Right.
But we have made, there are now, I think, are five connections made to the Arlington system that are in place. The TCEQ has authorized us to begin using Arlington water in our system, even without a booster pump that's going to be replaced by the City of Arlington. So our plan is to have, be taking water on a regular basis before the peak of the summer season, in order that we can reduce our reliance on the more expensive Fort Worth water by that time. And as far as I can tell, we're moving right along with that, those connections and that contract.
So maybe August timeframe?
I'm sorry?
Maybe August timeframe?
I think probably before August, we'll be taking water regularly in July, probably.
Well, the reason I'm asking is Gary and I had a conversation about the water when we were standing at Kid Fish. And because the water started tasting different, I'm like, oh, I thought I noticed it too. So that's why I was asking it, because I'm still not, you know, filling up, using gallon, you know, water jugs. So.
You're.
I don't drink the water. I don't drink the can of water. Some people love it, I don't.
But I thought it tasted better.
He thought it tasted better.
I think we must already be on Arlington or something, because it seemed to be better to me.
I don't think we have much.
I just threw that plug in there for you.
Okay.
But then anticipation of it, Gary, that makes it better.
Okay, thank you.
Any other updates? All right. Then we're going to move on to item number four, financial reports for the city. So we're going to have Lakeisha come up.
Mayor, I don't have any particular updates that are certain highlights, but since we do have new council members, I just kind of wanted to walk you through what the financials look like. They are very consistent from month to month. On page one, you're going to always find the summary for all of the major funds. So this is going to be your number one page that you want to look at. It's going to show you exactly where we are year to date. The information comes directly from the city's general ledger, where we are year to date compared to budget on expenditures and revenues. And that is the purpose of the budget. On page two, equally important, you're going to find all of the city's revenues and expenditures as they relate to Fund 01, which is our main general fund. Fund 01 is where all of, majority of our maintenance and operations expense comes from, from the general fund. So there you will see that. It kind of gives you a detail of exactly where we are in the fiscal year. So as of the end of April, we're at about 58% into the fiscal year. And in the little green section, you'll see the year-to-date column that says April 21. That will give you the specific year-to-date detail as to where we are on each revenue source and each expenditure source. So your front page is going to give you the summary, your back pages are going to give you the detail. And again, we always include all of the major funds in streets, water, stormwater. And on the very last page, on page six, you're always going to find all of the other funds. So any of the special revenue funds, any of the funds where, you know, hotel motel tax, any new funds that have been created, they're all going to be found there. On the left side on page six, you're going to find budget. And on the right side, you're going to find where we are year-to-date. So the goal was to make these financial reports an easy read, you know, for folks who are not used to doing this all the time. But hopefully, it's an easy read for you. And it's very consistent from month to month. We update it based on where we are during the fiscal year. But the layout of the report, I try to keep consistent for an easy read for you guys. So I don't have any particular highlights or anything. If you do look on page one, you'll see that our year-to-date expenditures are at 50%. That's pretty normal. If we're 58% into the fiscal year, we're 50% on our expenditures. We're at 83% of revenue. That's normal. You'll also find, I failed to mention, on page two, in all the pages behind, not only will you find year-to-date information, but you'll find where we were year-to-date this time last year. For a quick, you know, apples to apples comparison there, on our revenues in the general fund, 83.5%. So I know some of you may say, whoa, you know, we've collected a lot of revenue. That's normally where we are at this time of year, because we know that our sales taxes up, and also our property tax are paid early in the fiscal year, you know, January, February is when we receive most of those receipts. So you'll see that 83% creep up more and more and more as we get to the, towards the end of fiscal year. So that's normal. Actually, everything that you see here, as far as the major funds, expenditures, and revenues, is actually pretty normal for this time of year. As George mentioned, some of the expenditures you'll see down, which may be still normal, even if we're 58% into the fiscal year, if there's something that we normally don't pay for until July, you know, and if it's a bigger expenditure, of course, you won't see it out of here yet. So I just wanted to get up here, because I know we have some new folks, and kind of walk y'all through what they look like. And we won't have any detailed general ledger information in council meetings unless there's something you want to know. And then if there's something specific that you want, of course, you can email George or myself, and we'd be happy to get that to you ahead of time if possible.
Can I just ask you a question? Can you, you don't have to do it tonight if you don't want to, but can you explain what happened last year? Like, why in September, there was a need for an increase, and then the next month, there was a surplus?
No, I can't explain that tonight. I would advise you to write an email to George, and if that's something he wants to put on the agenda, then we can put something together for that.
Okay.
Yeah. I know we did, we visited it when we talked about the budget. When we outbriefed the council on the fiscal year 20 audit, we talked about that pretty in-depth at that meeting. So if you want to go back and watch that one. And then if you have additional questions, I would just suggest you send those in to George.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And it, see, something else you said. Oh, you'd mentioned the EDC hotel motel tax. That was another thing that I had, and this is not under her, but with where that money can be used. And maybe that's possibly, we can use that towards our budget. So that was another thought I had, too.
Well, hotel motel tax revenue can only be used for tourism and things like that. There's various specific and detailed things there, and it's pretty, it's a pretty restricted set of monies. So, you know, I don't know how much, I don't think we can get into that because that's not on the agenda.
Right.
But.
It just spurred me to think, oh, yeah.
Yeah. And I, you know, it's a newer fund as well. And the revenue that comes into it, I can just tell you, that comes, you know, from Airbnb.
Right.
Because we don't actually have a hotel, but because we do have that ordinance that was put in place, the Airbnbs, and they're kind of on an honor system, you know, with the state, you know, we don't go out and scout them out or anything like that. But they're kind of on, kind of on the honor system with the comptroller's office as well. And so when they pay their tax to them, they go ahead and pay the City of Cannondale portion as well. So.
I mean, there's not a lot, but every little bit, when you're looking at the budget helps.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and good job on this. It looks really good. So this is, I haven't seen this obviously in a couple of years. So good, good job.
Thank you.
Looks really good. It's easy to read.
Thank you, Lakeeta. All right, now we're going to move to the consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody wants to remove from it, or?
I would like to discuss the number two regarding the tech share.
Okay.
For Tarrant County District Attorney's Office. And I just have a couple of questions about it. I don't know if we have anybody here who could answer those. But the first is, is the agreement that they're asking us to sign, is that standard for all cities to sign?
Yeah. Captain Hall is here, but let me, my understanding of that, when we got the contract and read the agreement, that's a standard contract that any municipal or entity, law enforcement entity can enter into. I think it's pretty boilerplate.
Within Tarrant County.
Everybody's on the same page.
Right.
As we're using that tech share program. We currently use it for adult cases. This is simply allowing all jurisdictions that want to sign on to use it for juvenile cases as well. So I think it's the same agreement for everybody.
And are you aware of any cities in Tarrant County that deviate from the standard contract?
I'm not. Daryl, are you? Okay.
Okay. And then as far as, because as you were saying, for the adult system, it had been used for quite some time. Why was there such a delay in using this for the juvenile system?
Tarrant County DA's office, one that controls that. The juvenile part is just a module of the tech share for the adult.
Right.
It's a system that we upload our files, our case file, and it's electronically sent.
Right.
And all this is, is a separate module allows us to do the same thing for juvenile cases.
So are you trying to say that it's not delayed because of KPD, but because of Tarrant County District Attorney's Office?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's not, it's not our program. It's not our basis.
Okay. And as far as KPD is concerned, do you have any objections or concerns to using the tech share?
No.
Thank you.
Well, if they answered your questions, does anybody have anything they want to remove from the consent agenda, or we can do it all in one go? I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Seconded.
Sorry, that was Jacobson and Joplin, correct?
That is correct. And the motion passes unanimously. All right, we're going to item number F, which is items for individual consideration. The first one, and the only one, is the consider approval of an ordinance amending the senior and disabled discount provisions of the current water and sewer rate ordinance.
Mayor, this was placed on the agenda at the request of council, and I think Ms. Rhodes asked for this to be on here. I think we've explained in the council's packet what the ordinance does. Lakeeta can come address that if council has any questions about it. But I think what it does is extend or change the requirement that people reapply for the senior discount. Instead of every two years, extends that to every five years. And it would change the provision that a surviving spouse of somebody who had an account that was qualified for the discount, if that account holder passes away, the surviving spouse will continue receiving the discount without having to ever reapply for it. So those are the two changes in the ordinance as it exists. And we'd be happy to answer any questions, I think, and I hope that achieves what you wanted to.
All but one. I had another item where currently, we require an income. There's a threshold for income requirements. And I would kind of like to see that not be included in that. But I don't know if that's the council consensus or not. So we can either, you know, approve this as presented, or approve it with revision, or postpone it, table it. But I was, that was the other piece of this that I would like to see is to delete the income requirement. Because I know that there were quite a few concerns out there, that they had to, the applicant had to submit to the city how much they made. And they did not like that, revealing that part of their privacy.
The ordinance is always, I'm sorry, Linda, I did not understand that request. But the ordinance has, the discount has always required, had an income threshold, and it's always had, so you could qualify either because of income or because of a disability. And we did not address the income portion of that. And I'm not sure if you remove that, maybe the only qualification would be an age requirement. Everybody, and again, the reason I'm asking that is because if everybody at a certain age qualified for that discount, somebody's got to make that up. So it increases the burden on folks who oftentimes can less afford it than seniors can. So it's something to really carefully consider.
It is. And that's like I said last month, when we originally, when the city originally adopted this, we did not go by income. We went strictly by the Tarrant Appraisal District, the over 65 exemption and the disability exemptions. So we had the list from them. But then I think over the course of time, it was changed so that it wouldn't just apply to if I owned a home. I might be a renter and be over 65 and need that discounted rate. And that was a good change. But in doing that, the city probably, you know, they thought about, okay, how are we going to regulate this then? So that was someone's thought at that time. Let's do the identification, you know, your driver's license or your Texas ID, whatever it is, to prove your age. And then also, a limit on the income. So I guess my question is to council is, do we, do we want the income to be a part of this, a piece of this? Because it doesn't have to be. It's just a question.
Well, I would think that we would want income to be part of it, because if you have a very well-to-do senior citizen, I think that they have, I think the purpose of the discount for senior citizens and the disabled is because they're on a fixed income. And so if someone's not on a fixed income, then potentially, they shouldn't be able to take advantage of the discount. Because as, again, you said, it's to the detriment of someone else in the city who would have to make up that payment, who again, may not, they might not have the same amount of income as the other person.
I agree with that.
The only addition that I would have is, so with the seniors, I'm thoughtful, or try to be considerate of. I'm, I'm thoughtful or try to be considerate of them as far as the reapplication process. Um, because what started all of this is it, when we transferred over, I believe when we transferred to Arlington, their qualifications fell off and they had to reapply. Is that correct? Anyone know? Is that correct?
I think so.
Is that what happened? That's what's?
Yes, if they were supposed, yes.
Okay, so when we switched over to Arlington, they had to reapply, and that was cumbersome and complicated.
Yes, when they switched over to Arlington, the intent was to have everybody to reapply because with the new ordinance that was adopted last summer, um, probably 90% of the people that were receiving the discount had not applied within two years. And so whenever we switched off to Arlington, they were supposed to not receive the discount until they requalified themselves. Now, I'm going to add that, um, even though the, I believe the notification went out in February or so, letting the seniors know, they still continue to receive the discount. So no one has, um, not received the discount until this billing for May.
Okay.
So they've received it all the way up until then. Um, the only other thing I wanted to add about this ordinance, the way that it's written now, is that, um, we, we talk about, um, the part about the, um, the surviving spouse never having to reapply for the discount again. Um, I've never seen this done before, and, um, I just, I just want to put that out there, and you may want to have careful, careful consideration about that as well, because there is no consideration is, you know, if, if the spouse dies and then, um, the way that it was written for last June and prior was that if a spouse became deceased, their surviving spouse could keep the discount until the end of the fiscal year. And that's the way that it has been being done. If we change that, we're, we're changing it to, you know, from now until the end of the fiscal year until forever. And so, um, I don't know if that's particularly, you know, something that, you know, we want to do. If it is, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna administer the program however you want it to be. Um, I, I have never seen this before, and, um, I don't know if we're considering spouses, um, like Councilwoman Jacobson talked about, um, there may be a spouse that remarries, and when they remarry, the income may not qualify anymore. That's if we leave the income requirement in. So those type of things, that's all I wanted to add.
So you're, um, wanting us to be thoughtful about it because it's operationally?
No, 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 operationally, um, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna instruct the city of Arlington to, um, administer the discount however our council wants to administer. Um, we just want to be careful about it, you know, because we don't want it to look like we're cherry picking any certain cases of people, you know, to the extent that, you know, if a spouse, um, you know, we, we, we're certainly sorry if anyone loses their spouse, you know, of course, but if they do, we're going from them receiving the discount possibly for another 12 months to receiving it forever.
Got you, so that's the part to be thoughtful of.
Operationally though, Jen, Lakita, correct me if I'm wrong, operationally, if there is somebody who lost it for the billing in May, operationally, it may not be possible to go back and give a credit for a previous month. So if they reapplied or qualified because they had been a surviving spouse or whatever, I'm not sure the Arlington system will allow them to automatically grant it for this month that they missed.
And they will not, they do not do retro for this type of discount. So if a customer, um, lost their discount beginning this month, and then they don't reapply until July, um, the disc, and they, and they indeed do qualify again, when the discount, um, continues, it will pick up the next month, and it will not retro back to the months that they did not apply.
Okay, can I ask you another question? Okay, cause you said you'd never heard of it, so once someone qualifies, they're not going to get younger, and they're more than likely not going to be making any more than what they've submitted, you know, if there is a income.
Well, I agree that they're not going to get any younger, but we don't know what their income situation is going to be like, because even with this, within this short amount of time, whenever we transferred over to the city of Arlington, I would say we probably have, what, 200 or so customers that receive the discount? We've already had, um, I want to say 10 customers who have submitted their reapplication, and they did not qualify any longer.
Okay.
Based on the income limit. So that's another something to consider. If you remove the income limits altogether, you may be risking a little bit of the integrity of the program the way it was written in the first place.
Gotcha, understand that, thank you so much. So I always try to keep things easy, um, you know, my background is in operations, and it doesn't sound like there's a, like for me, it'd be simple to say, once you qualify, you don't reapply, period. Um, and that would make it super easy, but it sounds like that we need to keep some parameters in place to ensure that, um, it still is applicable to that person.
Yes, if we maintain the income requirements, we do need to have that checked periodically. And really, whether it's two years or five years, five years might be worse, because these people forget even one year, you know? So if you're saying going from apply every two years to apply every five years, you're still gonna get the same complaints, because they're going to forget that they even did it the first time. And then the other piece of that is, I'm not really for, on the disabled part of it for a lifetime deal, because, you know, you're right, that person may remarry, they don't know, so their income status would change then. So, I don't know, what do we do with this?
Well, I guess the first part would be, if everyone agrees that we need to make some changes, then we need to send this back to George and the crew to make some slight modifications.
And here's the other part is, I think if the application process had been made easier and it wasn't so cumbersome, like I spoke to a gentleman today, and he had to make three trips to get his application submitted. Like, you know, he picked it up, and then he went over to Arlington, to Green Oaks, and did something, and then went over here, and it, it just, it seemed like it was very cumbersome, and I don't know if maybe that's why we got so many complaints about it, because just the application process in general was not clear, or maybe it's just, I don't know if that process can be made easier, I don't know. You think it can?
I think that part of it is more, um, just, you know, the policy and procedure part of, you know, the application itself. We can always look at the application itself and make revision to the application if we want to keep the ordinance the way that it is and the way that it was adopted last summer, and make the application process, you know, a little bit less cumbersome. Um, we can do that, we can work with Arlington to see if they can do that. I don't want to say it's been a little bit difficult, um, having the program administered, only because the city of Arlington does not administer the program themselves. So this is something completely new, you know, to their staff, and having this program in the first place, so, um, but certainly we could look at the application and make it, you know, a little bit easier.
This is a tough one.
I, I think no matter what we do, we need to do it quick, because
Yes.
From what I just heard, they're not going to get their discounts unless they reapply now. So if we don't make changes to it, they're going to be month after month not getting a discount when they should be, so, um.
I'm good with the five years, the longer the better. And keeping the income level in place, the qualifications to.
What's, what's in front of you now is keeping the income in place, five years, and then the only other part that changes is the surviving spouses would not have to reapply at all. So if you're comfortable with those three provisions, you could adopt the ordinance as it's in front of you. If you want to change any of those, we'd need to go back and redraft it and have one more month when somebody might become ineligible.
Do you all want to think about the surviving spouse, what she's saying?
Well, and I'm, I'm wondering why, uh, why doesn't the current system keep going until we come to a new resolution?
Well, I think it was not programmed into Arlington's software data, you're asking me a question I can't technically explain, but to go, to be retroactive. So if somebody's lost this, the discount today and reapplies and qualifies, even because you changed the ordinance, and so they qualify, technology, from a technical standpoint, it's difficult to go back and give them credit for the months they missed.
Okay, so I think what Councilwoman Jacobson is asking is, why were we ever considering stopping it when it went to the city of Arlington?
Right.
And, um, it's because when we revisited the ordinance last summer, uh, we, we talked about in that meeting, when we switch over to the city of Arlington, uh, we need to go by what we have in place with this ordinance. So if you're being literal about it, whenever the ordinance was signed last summer, we're, we were really kind of behind on turning the discount off, because it would have been turned off in, starting in February, but we didn't do that. We went ahead and started sending notifications out, February, March timeframe, and then we still let it, let it continue for all of those months, February, March, April, and didn't do anything until May. And that was just because of, you know, staffing and stuff with COVID and everything, and short, being short-staffed with Arlington and them having to put in new coding and everything, because again, this is brand new to the city of Arlington.
So wouldn't we be able to allow the discounts to continue for the next month or two, until we are able to come to a new resolution?
As far as, as far as I know, I haven't seen the billing register yet, but, um, as far as I know, they stopped them for, for May. I'm sorry?
When you say they've already stopped them, who's they?
City of Arlington has already stopped the discount. That was, that was the last notification that I received. That's starting with the May billing, that's when anyone who hasn't reapplied and quali, requalified themselves, the discount would stop with the May billing. Because it was supposed to stop with the February billing.
So how did it continue from February until May?
Because the city of Arlington hadn't had that type of discount ever before, and it took time for them to program it into their system.
So there's not a way you can just direct Arlington to continue it?
We can direct them, but I can't tell you that that's something that they're going to be able to do administratively.
Okay.
Part of what we tried to do going into this system with Arlington is to keep as many of those nuances of our billing system consistent with what Arlington does. So it creates fewer conflicts and fewer, less difficulty administratively for them to handle it. This whole discount program is different than Arlington has ever handled, because they don't have it.
Yeah.
So it's something unique to Kennedale in their billing system.
Yeah.
And the reason for the ordinance in 2020, so before this ordinance currently, there was not a reapplication process, correct?
There was not.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Which leads us back to the reason that, you know, anyone who hasn't put in a new application, which I say probably 90% of the people, um, they would, it would have stopped for them in February, because we wouldn't have an application on file that was two years old.
And, and the discussion was, we had no way of knowing without a reapplication, whether they still qualified or not.
Well, with the item that we currently have, is anybody going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion with amendment. And the amendment would be for the surviving spouse, I, I agree that we need to, um, if we're going to have the application processed in, um, I'm going, um, you're weighing on me here, you know, to, to think about that part of it is when you do that indefinitely. You know, we either need to not have it at all, or have it consistent, that's my thought. So the amendment would be to have it five years for both one and two.
So you're saying more or less on the ordinance to strike section three of the ordinance? That might make it clearer.
I think she's, I think, I think she's, I think she means to strike the last sentence of what's, what's presented in your packet.
Okay.
The last sentence of the proposed revised subsection three.
I think you're right. So instead of be required to submit any further applications, continue to receive the discount, it would just be at year five, or when they, or whenever their term ends, when they go to reapply, that's when they would be reevaluated.
Right, but I would also like us to look at the application process and make that application process easier for our seniors.
So if you approve that, if we understand your amendment, Jen, if we, if there was a motion to approve it with that change in section three, we could ask Rue to change that and have the mayor assign the ordinance, uh, if it's consistent with the motion, not what's in your packet.
Right.
Is that your intent?
That's my intent.
Okay.
Well, I would, I would also add that, um, section three of your ordinance.
That's what I was talking about.
It, it has a provision in there that if any, if any surviving spouse, you know, their spouse, they lost their discount within a year of the effective date of this ordinance, that they would have to reapply, and once they did and their application was accepted, they wouldn't have to ever apply again. So I think article, or a section three needs to be deleted in addition to the last sentence of proposed section or subsection three of section 23 dash 83. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm too far away. Um, section three of the proposed ordinance, it basically states that if, if a surviving spouse lost their discount within a year of the effective date of this proposed ordinance, they would have to reapply, and once they reapplied and that application was accepted, they wouldn't have to reapply again. So Councilmember Joplin wants to, um, delete the last sentence of subsection three, which takes away the perpetual discount without reapplication. So section three of this ordinance would need to be deleted as well.
But the surviving spouse still gets the discount, but with qualifying.
So I think we're keeping section three.
Yes.
We keep section three, and then it's where it says is entitled to again, receive the discount upon submitting an application, period, and then delete, and will thereafter not be required to submit any further applications. That would be deleted, so we'd keep the sentence, just delete the tail end of it.
That works too.
That's what I was.
I think section two covers that, but that, that works as well.
Jen, does that sound correct to you?
Yes.
Then do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Linda.
Oh, sorry.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mayor, may I say anything else about this item?
Sure.
The only other thing that when we talked about the, um, the application, um, I will get out to you what the current application looks like, and if you can just give me any input or tell us, you know, what part of you think may be too difficult for a senior or something like that, and then we can go from there with trying to revise that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lakita. All right, that brings us to our public hearing, so we are going to start with case PZ 2112, so we're going to open the public meeting for that case. So.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Melissa Daly will present this case and public hearing.
Good evening, counsel. Hopefully you can hear me. Can you hear me okay? Okay, so this case is for an expansion and move proposed move for Ari Watson and Associates, who's who is in Kennedale currently and has been in Kennedale for about 40 years now since 1981. First opened on Valley Lane and then moved to where they're currently in 2004 on 620 Tower Drive. They have 8,400 square feet with 800 square feet of office. They also have on 600 Tower Drive, another 8,800 square feet. They have 63 employees, which is they have been expanding the that number of employees, and I'll talk about that more. And and also expanded their warehouse space now to 15,500 square feet of warehouse space with some covered storage. So you can see the trend of them expanding their business, which is great, obviously what we want to see in Kennedale, but they've outgrown their current site. So they're looking at a site on Kennedale Parkway. It incorporates three different properties. I'm going to talk just a minute about the previous case that was heard in February, which the council approved and convert change 731 East Kennedale Parkway to all C2. There was a portion of 731, which is this portion along this overlay line that slash mark is an overlay. That was R3 from here to the rear, and the council approved this to be C2 going to Mansfield Cardinal. What has changed since that case is that the applicant was able to go under a contingent contract to purchase 804, which is this yellow piece here, which they were not able to do at the time of the case in February. So acquiring this property or being able to go under contract for this property has changed improved, I guess you'd say, their ability to design the site. So this black line is roughly would be the outline of the proposed site in full. This is an aerial of the site. Of course, this is an interesting area with Kennedale Parkway on the front side and Mansfield Cardinal on the rear. So we have quite a few situations like in the like this in Kennedale where we have C2 and I zone properties. C2 allows a lot of light industrial type of uses as well up against residential property. And that's going to happen when you have those uses in six square mile city. So trying to find a solution to that, which allows for these businesses on the Parkway to sort of coexist with the residential is what I think this applicant has been trying to achieve. This is the property that where my mouse is. And you can see on either side, you have some pretty large manufacturing type use here and self storage on the other side. This is a zoomed out view of that. This is the site where the yellow star is. And then directly behind is Brookstone. And then you have, of course, on Kennedale Parkway, these other commercial uses. And we can go back. You may have some questions, and we can go back to any of these images. There's one over there that might be easier. So this is the view from Kennedale Parkway. As you can see, it is a vacant lot. Used to have several structures on it that were demolished, gosh, probably a year and a half, two years ago now. And then this is the rear of the property on here's Mansfield Cardinal. So this is a view into what would be the rear of the property. The and I'll show you the proposed plan that the the applicant is looking at for this site. But these this these large trees in particular, he proposes to remain. So largely, this view would pretty much remain the same. This is the site on the right hand side, and then you have Brookstone and several other residential developments on the other side of Mansfield Cardinal with walls or fences along the street. Mansfield Cardinal is not a residential street. It is a collector's street. There have been some recent sort of individual, single family homes that have been developed over the last few years, fronting Mansfield Cardinal, but it has really always been a collector's street to pull from the residences along that street to bring them to larger streets like the Parkway or 287, for example. This is the future land use plan. So the future land use plan calls for for businesses along the Parkway to be commercial in nature. That's this sort of pink red. When the council considered this case in February, that was the primary consideration because the lot is it was a single parcel that fronted Kennedale Parkway. So we're really looking at, okay, what is that use that is proposed in the future land use plan, which is commercial? The lines that you see on the future land use plan are really conceptual in nature. Of course, this pink line doesn't follow property lines. All of the property lines aren't aligned with this line. It's to give you an indication that properties that front the Parkway should be commercial in nature. However, it does also point to, generally speaking, the residential nature of what's behind it and that that be residential. And that's where I think, you know, there's a lot of areas like this in the city where you have clearly commercial areas that back onto residential. So how do you make that work? So I wish I could make this go away at the top. It's sort of blocking my thing. So this is, sorry, there's a a couple of slides. This actually it's blocked here at the top, but this actually references slides from the February council meeting. So I wanted to just show you this just so you could see where we came from on this. So if you remember, I mentioned that this yellow part of 731 East Kennedale Parkway, that was the case that was heard in February, was zoned R3. And the council did agree to zone this yellow part where my mouse is to C2. The other part that the applicant was looking to develop as part of this, this would have been the parking, was 733. And I'm sorry, but my mouse keeps like disappearing, but it's this red piece here, which was already zoned C2. So that's why in February, the case was only 731. My stupid mouse. 731 East Kennedale Parkway, which was this piece. The other one was already zoned C2. And he was not yet under contract with 804, which is this parcel next door. So again, this is a reference to the slide from the February meeting. And and at that meeting, this wanted to show the outline. This is rough. This is not exact, but we wanted to give you give the council an idea of the outline of the building and kind of where that would sit. So the blue that you hear see here was roughly the outline of where that building would sit. And we were showing some of the uses next door that were certainly very commercial, even manufacturing in nature. And also the screening, that's the green here that was required by the BOA, which at the time was to be 15 feet tall and evergreen solid screening. So this might be a little hard to see, but these are the special exception conditions that the Board of Adjustment approved in February. I won't go through all of these because and we can go back and revisit them if you have a question about them specifically. Most of them relate to the building facade fronting Kennedale Parkway and how that looks, the use of brick and so forth, fenestration, which is windows and doors. But of note, I mentioned the 15 feet tall screening, which was to be at the rear. This would have been a requirement, a condition that was required. And I should mention that these, the nice thing about the conditions on the special exception is these are there to make sure that it is compatible with the residential and, you know, the other commercial uses that are adjacent don't have these requirements or screening behind them. But also, they had a minimum rear building setback along Mansfield Cardinal of 70 feet. So that was significant and an important part of the conditions. So again, this is what the case that was being looked at in February was this lot here. And tonight, what we're looking at are the zoning cases for 731 and 804. Again, 733, which is this parcel, is already zoned C2. So that is not before you this evening. So this is PZ. Well, it's blocked. What is this 12? Sorry. PZ 12. This is the portion. This is this is roughly to scale, so it's not exact. But I did do a measurement to show what 100 feet would look like. This is currently with the blue and the yellow. This is currently R3. So the request before you tonight is to rezone PZ 12 is to rezone 804 Mansfield Cardinal to C2 for this area that's in blue. The the description that you have for the property actually includes this little strip that goes all the way up to the Parkway. We didn't have an exact description of that. We could not find where the city rezoned the back portion of Mansfield Cardinal R3. I think there may have been a city initiated rezoning, but we could not find it anywhere. So we didn't have a good description of where that ended, so we just included the entire parcel going to the Parkway here. So what is before you tonight, the description is this parcel in blue going to the Parkway, and it excludes the portion at the back, which is 100 foot depth. That 100 foot depth is consistent with R3 zoning in the city, which requires which requires 100 foot depth. So just kind of want to give you an idea, and you're all pretty very familiar with the city, but R3 is, for example, something you find in Winding Creek or Oak Hill Park or Steeplechase. Those are 100 foot lot depths. This is not exactly what it's going to look like, but some idea of what the front will look like. It will be 80 required to be 80% brick. So you'll see more brick on the front than what you see here in these images, but that's generally what is being proposed. And these are some of the materials that are being looked at in terms of that 80% brick requirement. And then this is some idea of the landscaping. This was one of the and I'll go through these in a second, but the Board of Adjustment did include in the special exception for 804, and they also reheard 731 because it was a little bit different boundary, you know, excluding the residential piece. Or to include the screening on the rear. And so these were some of the images of the types of screening we'd be looking at. The applicant can speak probably in more detail, but I did want to show you the site plan that he's currently proposing. This could change a little bit as he kind of plays with parking and things like that. But generally, this is the Parkway on the right hand side, Mansfield Cardinal on the rear. The part in gray is a is the building, and there's a proposed expansion potentially on the site with parking here and a possible detention pond on the front. Again, these have to go through plan review. There could be some changes, for example, related to detention. But this is this is where they are today. I think important to note, you'll see these two things here. Those are actually 18-wheelers, large trucks that come in for delivery. And the reason he showed those is because to illustrate where they do come in, that's, I think, been a question that's been asked. They will come in off of the Parkway. Of course, nothing will come in off Mansfield Cardinal. There'll be no access from Mansfield Cardinal. They will come in from the Parkway, pull in, pull, excuse me, pull up and then back and then out. So they will not circle around the building. You'll not have large trucks circling. The reason that you see the driveway around the building is because of fire fire lane requirements, fire access. So just a little bit on the numbers. Ari Watson last year had 58 employees. They now have 63. They would like to expand to 75 to 80 employees. Of course, we've seen a tremendous amount of growth in the metroplex so that they're being able to take advantage of that. Sales have been up 25% from last year to this year, which is some pretty incredible increase. Looking at valuation, so the current valuation of the three properties is about 252,000. We estimate the value upon completion of about 3 million. And so here you see the numbers for property taxes now and before and after, so to speak. So a pretty significant jump. So the BOA did approve a special exception use for for this use. There wasn't another option would have been to request straight I zoning. We did not recommend that because there is no other I zoning, and I zoning allows for some pretty heavy industrial uses. And so we felt that with the residential behind, that wasn't really appropriate there. So the C2 made more sense because it also not only allows that special exception use, but allows you to put the conditions on it to make sure it is compatible. So the one condition, of course, was that the zoning cases were approved would be approved, which of course they they well, they were recommended by by P&amp;Z, but it's before you tonight. The office use to be located along the Parkway with the warehouse building behind, which is what they're proposing. The parking, any parking fronting the Parkway shall have parking screening. This is low screening, basically, to screen the bumpers. It doesn't look like with their current plan, they're going to have that. But if they did, they would need to screen that. An eight foot tall wood or wrought iron fencing installed along the rear of the development and any property line shared with residential user zoning. So it would be along Mansfield Cardinal and along both sides on the rear. Where where that abouts residential zoning. And along with evergreen planting that creates a solid screening. And I apologize, I just noticed that should be evergreen screening and matures at a minimum of 12 feet. So pretty pretty tall screening for anything fronting Mansfield Cardinal or any residential property. The landscaping being maintained and then some front facing facade, fenestration, awnings and brick to make that look nice. So that was approved by the Board of Adjustment. Additionally, they approved a 25 foot rear setback instead of 50. There is a 50 foot setback required on any property adjoining residential property. That allows for that building to have, basically, in a nutshell, the building is now comes up further towards the Parkway, but is a little bit wider. So whoops, the ability to acquire or go under contract on 804 allowed for a reconfiguration of the site. So prior to, in in the first case that BOA heard, there would there was to be a 70 foot setback, and now there would essentially be 125 foot from Mansfield Cardinal, if that makes sense. So that's that's a really important part if that if if I'm not making that clear, just let me know. Oh, I'm sorry. And they also approved a 30% front building line instead of 75%. Kennedale Parkway has an overlay, which is this dashed mark that you see. Essentially, that is one of the requirements is to have a building frontage. So 75% of the of the property frontage would be building. So in this case, they allowed for 30%. So that's that's actually the next case. So I won't repeat all of that for the next case. I just have one slide for the next case, but we can go back and answer any questions you may have on that one, too. That's all I have for this one.
All right, then at this time, we're going to open the public hearing portion of this case, and we're going to call up Joanna Wilkins.
Good evening. I'm obviously going to make this as quick as possible. I've been in several or two of the BOAs. I tried to be in both Planning and Zoning Commission. I think it's important for the new council to know that in February, the Planning and Zoning Commission rejected this change on 731. And I realize there's two P&amp;Z cases in front of you. They're tied together. Everything that was presented back in February made it very solitary. This is one plot. This is just one thing happening. This is just one thing happening, which now we know is tied to the next plot. And I don't know, I mean, it's eight twenty next, eight twenty-two next, eight twenty-four. It's just going to keep growing into this industrial park. I live at nine twenty-four Roanoke. This is my backyard. This is literally my backyard. I stand on my deck next to my pool. I can see over the brick wall, I see this property. So there have been several things that have taken place since February. One being that a group of residents have retained legal counsel and legal proceedings are being in progress on the seven thirty-one and the eight oh four and everything else going on with this. I know there's rumors floating around that there were discussions that some type of amicable resolution happened. The residents are not aware of any amicable resolution or any talks or anything like that. So what we're faced with tonight is, once again, it is textbook spot zoning. It is absolutely against your own Unified Development Code. It's against your own governing ordinances. You're putting a, a glass manufacturing facility that says we're light, industrial in my backyard and others' backyards. You're going to take a hundred-foot section and leave it R three. But because of your own development code, the setbacks required for building on that leave you fifty-five feet to actually build on. So what house is going to go there? So what is the plan here for this hundred feet? What's really going to happen? There's a lot of questions. There's been a lot of activity. And I'm going to have to agree with what I heard Mr. Palmer say earlier. The government, the way it's been behaving and acting is broken when it comes to the residents. I've listened to all of you tonight. I've heard only one time your concern for the citizens, for the residents, for the homeowners. We don't disagree, we need businesses. But we live here and we live with this when they go home from work every day. They start beeping forklifts and eighteen-wheelers pulling in, loading, unloading, six AM in the morning. But I can't start repairing my fence till eight AM? I mean. None of this makes sense. So I am here tonight, along with others, to ask you to reject this change. There's, like I said, there's a lot of things in works, in the works right now. And moving forward with this tonight is really putting the cart way before the horse. There's a lot of uncertainty and a lot of things that need to be resolved first.
Ms. Elaine, is it Biles? You didn't mark if you wanted to speak or not. Did you want to speak? Please come on up.
First, I would like to say, based on what was earlier presented, Mansfield Cardinal is a bunch of homes. If you drive from Kennedale Parkway to Little School Road, it is nothing but homes. It's not just a handful. This is not about bringing new business to Kennedale. I'm all for it. This is a business that is already here. They want to expand, that's fine. Why are they not going to the industrial park that the city developed for this purpose? Our three land is being rezoned to C two with a special exception for industrial use right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. You want to allow an industrial manufacturing plant to be built in between homes. The city is bending over backwards for one person and rushing all of this through. Why the rush if you are on the up and up? You are in the wrong. Changes are being made on property with pending litigation. Why are rules different for this one person? Perception is everything. Changing the one hundred-foot off Mansfield Cardinal back to R three does nothing in comparison to the big picture. You cannot build a house on that. The city is going against its own comprehensive plan and code. This is spot zoning at its finest and why, and it is why you are now facing legal action by a group of Kennedale residents. Be for the citizens and homeowners of Kennedale like you so strongly campaigned for.
Thank you very much. Ms. Erin Jackson.
Hi, I think most of y'all know me. I drive down Mansfield Cardinal almost every day. And I can also attest that it is a bunch of homes until you get closer to a business two eighty-seven, where you then have, like, there's a church and there's a senior home. But most of that street is residential property. And I've watched that property develop in the five years that I have lived in Kennedale. And I think it's nice to see new homes going up. And I still see the empty lots and I want to see what these homes are going to look like because they're all different. It's not a cookie cutter neighborhood. But as a person who pays taxes in Kennedale, first off, I don't want to see a business in somebody's backyard. But as I'm driving by those empty lots now, they're going to stay empty because you can't build anything in the space that's being left. And also, with pending litigation, I think it's a bad idea to move forward. Because if those residents win, Kennedale's paying, which means I'm paying. And I don't want to pay because somebody jumped the gun. So I just think that there needs to be a pause until this litigation is over. And also, as someone who drives by there, and if you tried to build a industrial business in my backyard, I'd be mad. I would be up in arms. I would sue the city and. It's just. Lots of talk tonight about bringing in business, 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 business. But this business doesn't even service the city of Kennedale. It's a wholesaler, not a retailer. You're not getting any property, you're getting property taxes, you're not getting any retail taxes. So while it's great to bring in business and we need it, there's a place for that and it's not a bunch of people's backyards. That's all I have to say. I put in one for both of these, but seriously, they're really the same issue. So I don't need to talk again. Thank you.
I'll still call in if you decide to speak again, you'll still have your time. And last one on this one is Chance Wells.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me come and address the council. Chance Wells, I live at seven zero four Mansfield Cardinal. I, I spoke against this in February when the Planning and Zoning Committee had rejected this and the council passed it. Earlier this evening, in regards to businesses, Mr. Mitchell, you said that the council needed to listen to the residents. The residents right now are saying, no, we don't want this. Ms. Joplin, you'd mentioned turning potential parkland into space for businesses. This is what, that would be a great opportunity for something like this. The, the noise issue that was brought up earlier. He is, on his website, their business starts at seven AM. Is he going to make changes to that? Are you going to, is he going to be willing to, you know, change his business hours? They say that we're not going to have to deal with any traffic. We already deal with industrial traffic on Mansfield Cardinal Road. If you go, if you go down it, you'd see it. It's, it's going to increase, it's inevitable. This business brings no opportunity for employment to the residents. Brings no retail, there's no, no, but no resident can go and shop there. It's a wholesale, it, there's no benefit. The surrounding property values are going to decrease. When I spoke in February, Mr. Mitchell, he said, yeah, we, we, we feel bad for the residents, you know, certainly. But that doesn't seem to be the case because this is getting just, it's getting railroaded right through. I just. You know, there was, they mentioned earlier the, the property taxes on, that would increase on these. Well, what, what are the property tax exemptions? What, you know, what does this business, what exemption does he receive? So that's something that, that would like, that I'd like to have addressed. And then it was said, it said that the collector, you know, that Mansfield Cardinal was a collector's street. But if you go right here off Business twenty-seven at the church and the pecan manor, if you go down all the way to Little Road, it's a hundred percent residential. There's not any businesses that are on the Mansfield Cardinal side. So I think that's, it's a hundred percent residential. I think they're calling it a collector's street in that regard is, is false. So I'm in opposition and I just, you know, I don't understand why this would be pushed forward, especially when it's already, the previous case is facing legal litigation. Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing now and open it for response from staff and questions from council.
I'm, I'm happy to answer any, any questions you may have.
Melissa, there is. So there's a picture up there that shows where he's going to be. And then next to it, there was another industrial building. You could go back to that.
You mean the aerial?
Yeah, the aerial. The actual picture.
I did forget to mention, I'm sorry, that P and Z did recommend approval unanimously. I forgot to mention that. This one or this one?
Yes, that one. So what is, what's the building next to them? Is that?
This is a storage, self-storage facility. This is some sort of manufacturing facility. Okay, I, I looked up on the web, I've forgotten the name of it. And it mentioned that they manufacture some, some, something, but I, I can't remember. I looked it up about a month ago or so when I was researching it.
Can I ask her what she said that it was, the lady in the? Do you know the name of it? And on both sides, it is C two?
Correct. We have the zoning map, there, there it is. Well, this is the current zoning.
So it's already currently a mix of C two and with the R three?
Correct. I, I think the question was asked about exemptions. This business, as far as I know, wouldn't have any exemptions that I'm aware of for taxes.
I think it did at one time. I, I think it had a three eighty.
There's no incentives on this.
Okay.
Would the applicant like to ask any questions or answer any questions? Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Hello, I'm Mark Watson. What can I answer? First off, we don't manufacture anything. We're a fabricator. We make framed mirrors. We cut and polish and fabricate mirrors. And we make shower doors. We buy moldings that we cut and join to make framed mirrors. We buy aluminum extrusions that we cut and make shower doors out of. We've been in Kennedale since nineteen eighty-one. My dad started the business in nineteen eighty-one. I was his first employee in nineteen eighty-two, November of eighty-two. Built, dad retired in ninety-nine. I built a warehouse on Tower Drive in two thousand and four. And we've just been growing. We work really hard and we do start early. I don't know if it got to. The citizen's attorney that is filing suit or whatever they're proposing. But my attorney was talking to Kennedale's attorney about. Having them come and see what the noise we make. Come, come in, stand out in the street, whatever you want to do. I mean, come see us. She said, one of the ladies said that that didn't happen. So I guess my attorney talking to Kennedale's attorney, I guess that never made. I even was told that maybe they would come Monday or Tuesday, which was yesterday or today. And I said, yeah, come on, we go to the land. Well, we'll, we'll, you know, it's basically two hundred and thirty, the back of my warehouse or the proposed warehouse would be two hundred and thirty-four foot from Mansfield Cardinal to where the warehouse starts. That other warehouse is. Maybe it's not, it's not that far. I don't think. We do make noise. I don't think we're nearly as noisy as Mansfield Car, or two eighty-seven business, the Parkway, whatever you call it. So I don't know. I mean, I guess it's up for you guys to decide whether we fit there or not. We don't get any incentives. You know, we pay, we collect and pay sales tax monthly that the city gets, the county gets, the school gets. What questions can I answer?
So. And obviously, I don't, I don't know what type of noises your business makes. But what are your plans to minimize the, any noise issues that may occur for the neighborhood behind you?
You know, most of our, our dumpster will be at the very front of the property. I don't want the, the dump truck, or the trash trucks are very heavy. And, and I don't want them on my concrete. So the dumpster will be up towards two eighty-seven business. It will be right, located right where the dock is, anyway. We don't have any plans to, to change what we're doing because we're not that loud. The reason anybody say anything about noise is because I brought it up initially in the first meeting that we do make. We're a business, we have sixty employees. We only keep about twenty to thirty of the employees in the warehouse. Ten of those are in the office. And then the rest go out and install. I mean, we go to, you know, we, every, every Monday, we send three trucks to, we send two trucks to Austin, sometimes three. We send two to San Antonio, sometimes three. They don't get back till Tuesday night or Wednesday. Wednesday, we send two to three trucks to Houston. So a lot of our, and then we're, you know, gone out of the city a lot of days. So we don't really, you know, I have to be able to do business. I mean, you know, if, if it's not a good fit for Kennedale and the residents, then so be it. We'll, we'll have to go somewhere else. When I saw the property was up for sale, I thought, gosh, that would be great. And, you know, and, and Melissa can tell you, I contacted her about ten times for a different property trying to build. And it's like, no, that's not the, you can't do there. No, you can't do here. And, and it's just not here. I mean, I just, you just don't have the property in Kennedale to build what we need to build. We need a fifty thousand square foot warehouse. So back to your, the noise, I mean, we make noise, you know.
Would it be comparable to the properties next to you and the businesses there?
I don't really know what the properties, I, you know, there's no noise from the. The little bill, the ware, middle warehouses or whatever, storage buildings. I don't think they, I mean, somebody opening a garage door or something. But I, I don't know anything about the businesses on the other side. I have no clue.
And will all the traffic onto your property be coming from Kennedale Parkway?
Yeah, there's no access to the, you know, and, and with turning the back hundred foot into residential, I mean, there's no, there is no access. There's never been any access. I don't want access, I don't want it to drive through where.
Right.
Things get.
Okay.
You get sixty people, things can walk off and people can come into your parking lot, the back door and.
So what are your plans for the back one hundred and twenty-five feet?
Nothing.
So vegetation, evergreens?
I mean, I could sell them. I mean, if y'all want somebody to build a house on them, I'll, I'll put them up for sale, you know, as soon as, as soon as I get them bought. You know, I'm in a contingent contract that ends next Tuesday, a week from today. So, you know, why we're rushing this all through is because the sellers of the property, you know, they gave me a hundred and twenty days. And, and it's coming to an end. So. That, that's. It's again. Where? Those are, those are parking spots, yes, on the backside of the fire lane. I'm sorry. I don't think your backyard's on that lot. But, yeah, it will be, it will be fairly close to two homes that are on each side. Approximately a hundred and fifty foot from the property line on, on this side. And I, I think, I take it since you have the warehouse behind your property, that, that would be your backyard right there. So about a hundred and fifty foot from your property line, I would say, maybe a hundred foot. And there's actually some big trees there. And I told Kennedale's attorney. And there's actually some big trees there. And I told Kennedale's attorney as well. I'm happy to leave all of those trees, any trees they want, or we can cut them all down. I mean, I don't want to cut them down. I think they're beautiful, you know, and some of them are giant.
So clarify for me. So your current intention is actually to never develop those residential lots, but to hold them forever?
It never has been, even before, you know, we're trying to get, you know, well, we're not there yet, but I'm doing that to, to make it better for the residents, you know? And, and me getting that other piece of property, that, that long yellow piece that basically we're trying to get rezoned part of it to C, C two right now. Had to have an 84 foot by 550 foot warehouse. That's all I could get in there because of the restrictions on the side. That's as big as I could get. So it had to be long and skinny. Now getting that other property, the 804, the one that actually fronts Mansfield or, you know, Mansfield Cardinal, I was able to increase the width of the warehouse 125 feet and reduce it by 110 feet. Now it's only 440 feet.
So as far as operations go, when I hear glass manufacturing, the first thing that comes to my mind is there's blast furnace, melting glass, molding glass, shaping glass. That's not what you do.
We don't manufacture, we manufacture nothing.
So you basically get shower doors of glass and then you're putting the metal frames on them?
We would buy like, we did that, that glass that your reception desk, we would, we would buy that glass fabricated from a tempering plant and come and put it up. That's what we do. But we'll also make a shower door. You know, you put aluminum around a shower door, you take a rubber mallet, you cut, you know, you cut it with a double, with a chop saw and beat it on to a piece of glass. And then the framed mirrors, you, we order the mirrors pre-cut, most of them. We cut the moldings, the, you know, with a double mitre saw, put the moldings together, glue them at the corners, underpin them, put the mirror in there, put flex tabs on it, run a bead of mirror mastic around it, wrap it and set it on a rack. When it's time to go, we load them all on, on our A-frame. We don't have any 18 wheelers. We just have diesel pickups, 2500 HD pickup, 15 of them.
Gary, you got any questions? Jane, you got any more? Julie?
No other questions.
Linda, you got anything? Thank you. I do want to ask, where did she go? Melissa, as far as this use goes, how does it compare to uses in a C two district on its own that are allowed by right?
Well, our code requires for, this would be light manufacturing. And the reason it's called light manufacturing is it includes assembly, which is what he's referencing as opposed to actually like manufacturing. And that's just the way our definitions in our code are. I, I think it's very compatible with the other uses on the Parkway. A lot of the uses that you'll see on the Parkway. But it just, it requires that special exception because it does fall under manufacturing, even though it's light manufacturing, which includes assembly. If that makes sense.
It does.
I did also want to mention, just as a clarification, if this were approved, the property would be replatted. So the parcels that are part of the development would become a parcel. And the parcels on the rear that would be zoned R three would be platted into a separate lot.
Last chance for questions?
Okay, I'll take it then. So this is a tough one because there, you know, I mean, I have apartments being built in my backyard. So I, I understand, understand your pain. I really, really do. So my question to you, as you mentioned, the residential piece of it, would you be willing to make this contention on never selling that so that that stays just nice green place for them, for the residents there? I mean, just not selling that, those lots and, and just leaving it there. Right. True. Right. Have any of the citizens gone to his, gone to where he's at now to hear?
No, but can I, I gather that out in that backyard? And I, this is a, I've heard that you've had an invitation. And can I just my husband just moved to Kennedale. And this is our very first
Welcome.
Why don't you do me a favor real quick and actually step up to that microphone? That way everybody online can hear you too.
Okay. And I, I'm sure I'm out of order, but could I just make a suggestion that when someone comes up? I'm, I think you're with the city probably, right? If, if you all, just for like new people like us, if you would just say, I'm Stacy Skeef and I'm, I'm, I'm so-and-so with the city, or I would love to know what you do because I know you work for the city, right? If I, I just, because we're just trying to learn who everybody is. Could I just make that suggestion? That was my name. And, you know, and I'm just a citizen of Kennedale now. And I've, if, could I just make that suggestion? Yes. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. So with that being said, we, we have closed the public hearing. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and move forward. Are there any other questions from counsel to the applicant or staff?
I have one for staff. The R three, if this is approved and that back piece is zoned R three, that is the size requirement for a home to be built there.
It is.
With no problem.
Yeah, yeah. We have quite a few homes like that. The front setback is 20 feet. The rear setback is 15.
Okay, thank you.
I did also want to mention, I don't know if Drew wants to speak to this, but I don't know that we can restrict somebody's ability to sell their property.
This is a straight rezoning case, so we can't, we can't put any conditions on approval for this application.
With that said, can I get a motion for this case? It differs between the zonings.
So about yeah, I'm not sure what you're R, R four and R three that was changed to 20 about a year or not, maybe a year ago. I can provide that ordinance to you if you'd like.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Can I make a comment right quick? I want you guys to know that we are your representatives. It's not like we just want to sit up here and make you mad and send you home discouraged. And it is, this is a, this is something tough for us to do. We don't want to do it either way, really. So I just want you to understand, I was on the council some years ago and, and a lot of the council members had to go out the back door and I was one of the only ones that walked out the front door. So it's not like, it's not like that now. We, we don't, we don't want to be your enemy. We want to be your voice. But at some point in time, somebody is going to build something on that C two on the front. You're going to have C two up there. Eventually you're going to have it. It's just the way it is. The reason that I liked this new, this new proposal was because it goes back to R three on the back and you do have a longer, a bigger setback. And do what? But it is definitely going to be a house. You see what I'm saying? So.
Okay, we're going to have to stop the discussion because the public hearing portion is closed.
We want, we want to hear from them. I mean, I know, it's, I know, I understand, but, you know.
I would just agree with, with Gary that at some point someone's going to come along and build their something. You know, that's, you know, that's, that's going to, that's going to happen and
The, the public hearing is closed. I understand we all still have the desire to be heard, but that portion of this case is over. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve PZ 21-12 as written.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Jacobs.
21, I got 12 on my first one. It's on top, yeah.
The motion did pass unanimously. That brings up case PZ 21-11 to conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance regarding a request by Mark Watson for a rezoning from C two commercial to R three residential for approximately 0.4 acres of land within 100 feet of the northeastern boundary line of 731 East Kennedale Parkway Lot 15. Something 15, 15A, 16, 16, 16C, 16D, CA BOAS subdivision in the JB Renfro survey city of Kennedale, Tarrant County.
So I'll keep this really short rather than go through it again, but this, the second part of the case to rezone to R three, the rear section of the 731 property. So it's a long description that basically includes the entire property minus the 100 feet on the rear of the property. So that's roughly what you see in blue. That would be zoned to R three. And as I mentioned, would be replatted to take that out of the front part. Happy to answer any questions on that. And we can go back if you want to revisit any of the previous slides.
All right. At this time, I think we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing portion. So we are opening the public hearing for case PZ 21-11. Ms. Joanna Wilkins, would you like to speak against this one too?
I think getting the information correct is the only way you can make an informed decision. None of the residents have any issue with the urban corridor plan for Kennedale Parkway that was supported. I'm still in support of that. What I'm not in support of is bringing that back in, further back towards all of these homes into our backyards, into our daily life. Mr. Watson goes home to another city. He doesn't live in Kennedale. I have to live with his business after he goes home. I have to live with what's going on over there. We're missing the bigger picture here, which is that area of Kennedale Parkway in Mans, in between Mansfield Cardinal. That's not industrial. His business is classified industrial for a reason. It's not classified C two. You're cramming something classified industrial into a C two and you're putting a, like a square into a round hole and you're just going to keep shoving it in there until it finally fits. But at what cost? At what cost? You're setting precedents that will hurt the residents. It will. You've got this one lot. Is he going to go buy more? We're going to be in here again in a couple of months because he's going to buy another lot. He's going to keep doing this. Or someone else and they're going to say, well, you did it over here. Now you have to do it for me. So before long, that whole section of Mansfield Cardinal is going to be backed up to an industrial park. Not just a business. And what his business does, whether it manufactures or not, it makes noise. It makes dust. It starts business at 6:00 AM. And I don't get up at 6:00 AM. So the first time one of his beeping forklifts wakes me up, I'm not going to be happy. But because I can't even go like nail slap on my fence at eight o'clock. I mean, we're just missing the big picture here. And I realize you just voted unanimously on the other one. So I'm probably just up here talking and I'm going to use every second of my three minutes because y'all need to listen to the residents. I've lived here four years. I haven't lived here 15 like some of the others. But the reputation of the Kennedale City Council, when I got here, was not great. And what I've witnessed in my four years, I don't have any faith in my council. I am literally standing here begging y'all to listen to the people that buy these houses and live in them and raise families in them. We want businesses. But there's a right way to do this. And this is, you don't cram it down the throats of your residences. You don't spot zone something just because you want it there. You don't spot zone it because a business threatens to leave Kennedale. His reputation is based on him being in Kennedale. There's plenty of other lots. We've all looked at them before in previous hearings. So I would just encourage you to look at the bigger picture when you're considering this. And thank you. My time's up.
Thank you very much. Ms. Elaine Biles, would you like to speak again?
Since the citizens are not being listened to directly on the big picture, I'll let our attorney handle the rest.
Thank you very much. Ms. Erin Jackson, would you like to speak? Which picture?
I think she may have been referring to the picture from the previous zoning case. So just
No, that one's good. That one's good right there. Okay. So you see where that black arrow is coming from? You see the bottom end of the, the line, not the pointy part of the arrow? I don't know how good you can see it on the screen, but that black line is actually in the middle of her house. That's the middle of her house. So as you can see, where you have your 125 foot setback bisects the middle of her house. It's not her backyard even. It's the middle of her house. This whole area is a fence line. And if you bring back the picture where it shows how long his building's going to be, that parking area is all the way back here. That's her backyard. And on the other side here, you have something else that's supposed to be residential. So who's ever going to buy this? Nobody. Somebody commercial is going to buy that. Well, this is what you just voted on to let this be commercial. And so he's going to build there, there. So who's going to buy this? I wouldn't. So you're going to have another commercial business say, let me come in behind this guy because it's already commercial. So now you're changing Mansfield Cardinal to commercial because this person's not going to have access from Kennedale Parkway. They're going to have to come in down Mansfield Cardinal. And all of this could be residential. It's all, it's all residential and you're changing the nature of the area. But this is not, not somebody's backyard. This 125 foot setback does not help the residents. So what I would ask is that the consideration for this little plot where you can build a tiny house that, I mean, you live in Kennedale for a reason. It's because you want at least the I mean, you live in Kennedale for a reason. It's because you want at least a half an acre lot, but you're going to rezone 0.4 acres. I wouldn't buy it. But that you don't rezone that R3. You rezone, you wait and then next month, you put it on the agenda to actually have a zoning commission, look at this and zone it in a way that nobody, because he says he's not going to do anything with it. He owns it right now. Make him keep it. And so that he never does anything to it. Make him keep it and then make him keep his word. And I'm not asking you to change what you did right now. I'm asking you not to make this change. Make him keep it and then address the zoning for it in another meeting because he has volunteered that he would not ever do anything with it. Once you rezone it, he's just going to sell it. And then anybody can do anything with it. Make him keep it and not do anything to it. I'm sure my time should be up.
I can't see your time, so.
I can't either.
And that was our last public speaker. So we are going to close the public hearing and oh, I, okay, I'm guessing it was on the other one as a double. Come on up.
I, I just wanted to correct myself from earlier when I said facing legal litigation. I should have said facing possible legal litigation. But they, all three of these ladies make very good, very good points. They're all valid. And I do want to say with all, with all due respect to Mr. Watson, this is from his website. It's quote, they're recognized as the leading interior mirror and glass wholesaler in Texas, end quote. The whole state is what I take from that. So why does the, the leading wholesaler have to come to Mansfield Cardinal and start crowding out all these residential homes? I mean, I think that's a valid question. Out of the whole state, he's got to come right there and it's got to get like, I, I said it earlier. This has been railroaded through. And, and you, and you said it again, Mr. Mitchell, you said that you care about the residents and that you're, you're our voice, but that our, we're put, being put on mute. We're, I mean, we, we just saw unanimous decision for this to get pushed right through and it benefits nobody. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Now we are going to close the public hearing and bring up Melissa for any questions that staff has regarding this case. Jan, you got anything?
I don't have any questions.
Gary? Julie?
Just to clarify, this resolution is changing that back property to R3 so that Mr. Watson cannot extend his warehouse any further. Is that correct?
That's correct, but also the board of adjustment requirements for that, those setbacks would prevent that as well.
Thank you.
Linda? See anymore? Does anybody have any further questions for the applicant? Nope. Then do I have a motion?
I'd like to make the motion for case number PZ 21-11.
Approved, deny table?
I'm sorry, what?
To approve, deny or?
I'm sorry, to approve.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Mitchell?
I would just like to state something real quick before the vote.
Go ahead.
We as council, we have big responsibilities up here. We have to listen to not only the resident, the taxpayer, the business owner as well. We have to look at our city as a whole and try to benefit everyone. And that's not easy. So, you know, I know a lot of people, Jan just said that she had something moving in close to her. My mom has a business right in her backyard. You know, sometimes that's just how things work out. And it's not funny. I take this very serious. I just, I just wanted to put that in your mind again, if you didn't already have it, is our job is not just to listen to one person or just a few select. We have to listen to everyone as a whole. And then make the best decision that we can because we have to look in the mirror the next day. That's all I have. With all due respect, you don't know who all we listen to. Thank you.
Vote's been called. And the motion passed unanimously. The next item is, do we need to go into exec, exec session again? Nope. Then I need a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Second by Ms. Jacobs. All in favor or just raise your hand? Unanimous.